And I'm going to call this meeting of the Planning Commission to order. We have a quorum present, there's six of us. So the first item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The commission may request for a consent agenda item to be moved to the regular agenda for presentation and public comment. Otherwise, the consent agenda may be considered in one vote. All items on the consent agenda have been recommended for approval by staff with no opposition received to date. Since some of the items on the consent agenda may require public hearing, the commission will accept public comment on any item on the consent agenda in one public hearing. The two items are the minutes and the replat 2332 in Bentwood Country Club Estates. So I'm going to open it up for public comment. Does anyone wish to speak on either of those items? Okay. Seeing no one wanting to come up to the podium, I'm going to close public comment and take a motion.
Make a motion to approve as presented?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Six, zero. Okay, regular agenda, rezonings and comprehensive plan amendments. City Council has final authority for approval of rezonings and amendments to the comprehensive plan. Item 1, Z 2311 and CP 2304, request for a comprehensive plan amendment from neighborhood to neighborhood center and rezoning from single-family residential RS1 to neighborhood commercial located at 4415 Armstrong.
Good morning, Ray Lineberry Planner. This one, the temporary address is 4415 Armstrong. So it's going to be, if you remember last month, the plat, you guys approved the plat. There's a line that cuts out this residence and it kind of makes a flag. We're talking about the bigger one, not the residence. So this was JNO Abe March and they are requesting to change the comprehensive plan from neighborhood to neighborhood center and rezone it from single-family residential to neighborhood commercial. It's in District 2, Tom Thompson, Lakeview Neighborhood. And there's the comprehensive plan on the left and the zoning map on the right showing that it's mostly residential. If you notice on the comprehensive plan, this is neighborhood center. So there is some neighborhood center in the area, otherwise it's residential and ranch and estate. We actually received three in opposition. I gave you a copy of the latest one that we got Friday. The third one, I believe, is this one. And they're worried about having a commercial business in a residential area. The applicant does plan on putting storage units in there, one-story storage units. So, let's see, the staff was really thinking that neighborhood center would, or neighborhood commercial would make more sense because if, for whatever reason, they decide to sell the storage units or any of the above, nothing else can go in there. It would be very much a, he would have to come back and get a conditional use, so you would hear a conditional use next month for the storage units in the neighborhood commercial. So the vision plan does have some neighborhood center that I showed you to the south and this proposed rezoning, it will not conflict with the zoning ordinance and it is mostly single-family and ranch estates. There's no anticipated adverse effects and that a storage facility near residential usually is successful, it has a history of success. So staff is recommending approval of the comprehensive plan amendment from neighborhood to neighborhood center and recommending approval from residential to neighborhood center. Is there any questions?
What is the current neighborhood commercial that's south of the property? Is it operational? I can't recall offhand.
Used to be a nursing home there.
Okay.
Part of it burned down. I think it's a residence now.
Okay.
Oh, in that area. And I think it's all houses.
Okay.
I was gonna say, I think it is houses.
Is that correct?
I believe so.
So, in the packet, there's a, it looks like a replat.
Yes.
You alluded to this earlier.
Yes.
So is the request to rezone, it looks like lot 3 and lot 4.
Yes, the request is to rezone lot 4, the bigger one.
So only lot 4?
Correct.
And it's the flag lot?
Correct.
So it's got a bunch of excess land towards the back of the property.
The, the storage-
Are you guys familiar with this? You'll have?
The, the storage units are going to be towards the back, he said.
Okay.
They're, they're gonna take up the big, the back.
Okay. So there's 120 feet of frontage on Armstrong for this lot? Okay. Just wanted everyone to be aware of what we're looking at.
Was this for the softball field or something?
I think, yeah, I think, yeah, that's another question. Yes, you can see in the picture there-
So this is the one last month-
The ball fields that are on the, on the west side of the lot.
Yeah, this is the one last month that they requested to waive this street, the build-out of that street that the city had and it was approved, so there was no requirement to build out that street.
Okay. Okay. Anyone else have questions? We're gonna open it up for public comment. Thank you, Ray. Anyone wish to speak on this case, please come forward, state your name and address or single member district. Okay, I'm going to close public comment. So just looking at this, rezoning it to commercial, there's not a lot of frontage on Armstrong, which would be the main thoroughfare for commercial. But if the ultimate use is self-storage, obviously I think it's probably more appropriate to have it tucked behind the commercial frontage. So, we've got ball fields on the west side of the, of the lot. What's to the north? And what is the nature of the opposition?
This is talking about the baseball field, so it's not even really, you know.
Do you have comments on the other two that opposed?
No, all they did was send back that they're opposed.
Okay.
And also do remember, it is neighborhood center, it is not CG, so it's not full commercial. So that does limit what kind of commercial can be, be put in there.
Yeah, but again, to, you know, the point that I was trying to make is that if you look at the way this lot's configured, we're not going to get any commercial development on this lot. It's a flag lot. So, we don't have zoning specific for self-storage, do we? It's a-
And that's, that's part of staff's concern with, with rezoning it to the top of zoning that you would need to do self-storage. It would potentially allow a number of other commercial uses that we're not sure is appropriate for this area, which is why we're recommending the neighborhood commercial, which is more limited. But as Ray mentioned, that would then require them to come back for the conditional use for the self-storage.
How far away is this from the RV park on Armstrong? I'm trying to Google.
Mile down the road, if not more.
Mile? Because that's when it kind of starts changing use a little bit. A little bit more industrial that way.
I don't know that I'm necessarily opposed to a self-storage facility here.
Right.
I, I don't know how it could be anything but a self-storage facility the way the lot's configured.
Right.
And so to your point, the, the other options would not be a good use of this property if it's got, we have single-family homes that front on, what is that, 40th Street? What's on the south end there, 44th? 44th Street?
There's a new house there by the baseball fields on the south end, and it looks like there's a home on the north side.
So, the only access to this lot is from Armstrong and it's a flag lot. So it's too narrow to put any structures on the front of the lot.
Do they have to put up fencing for, to cover that?
Yes, any, any commercial use adjacent to residential zoning would be required to put up fencing.
Is this gonna have, like, an access point to get to what we talked about last month with the baseball field or no? Like, so you've got traffic coming through the storage or is that 100% separate?
So you're talking about the western boundary?
Mm-hmm.
Currently, no, they would not allow to be accessed there. They would actually have to improve that.
So this is solely for storage?
Correct. We have not seen a layout plan as of yet. That is one of the requests we have before the conditional use comes forward. Because obviously, the fire prevention team would have some questions and concerns of how are you going to get a hydrant back there and circulation for emergency vehicles? Although it is self-proposed to be self-storage, they just want to ensure that they can access the site as well.
Is lot 3 a residential lot?
Yes.
So we've got residential, north and south, and east, and baseball fields to the west. Anyone else want to share their thoughts on this?
I mean, it kind of goes back to, I mean, we approved a storage building two months ago, right at the entrance of the bluffs. I mean, so again, you know, and that one was tucked towards the back of the property on there. So it's very similar as far as the amount of frontage.
The difference, the difference to your point-
Right.
Is that there's commercial all around that site.
Right.
There's residential all around this site.
Mm-hmm.
There's not a lot of development, there's a lot less density-
Right.
-in this immediate area.
Yeah, if you go, once you cross Lakeview Heroes and it starts changing use with RV and recycling and all of that.
It's a very rural area. You look at the development around it. Anyone else want to share thoughts or make a motion?
I don't know, I'm torn.
The real issue I have, and I'm, I feel the same way, the real issue I have is that this is a flag lot and we're zoning it for commercial, which would not be a good use of this land as a flag lot. If this lot had a lot of frontage on Armstrong, I think it would be more appropriate.
And the only other use you have, I mean, without commercial or even what they're proposing is to cut a street in there and develop it into lots, but I don't foresee that happening either.
Right.
Because you've got a house that sits in the middle of it, in the piers. You know, that's why it has to be a flag lot. The other thing you'd have to have is have a drive to the back if somebody bought, built a house back there.
I don't know.
Do we know how many units are going in?
We don't have a plan at all, do we?
We do not, but then again, if this moves forward and they apply for the conditional use, that is something you can consider in the conditional use. How many units are there, what it looks like, how they're set back, any, any other items on that. This would just be the zoning and the comprehensive plan to allow them to come forward with the conditional use.
Is there any other storage units close by?
I don't remember, I know there's been some proposed off of Lakeview Heroes, but to the north side that are outside the city limits.
Yes, there aren't any on Armstrong.
I don't know that they've ever developed, but I'm not aware of any that-
I'd say the closest ones are probably on Chadburn, by Lane Weathermark, that area.
It's in good ways.
And I don't know if there's anything off of 2105, if there's nothing down that way.
Well, you've got more shop space off of 2105. I mean, if anything, it would be on 29th.
You know, I keep coming back to this, the zoning allows for a very broad variety of uses. What other uses? I'm assuming retail strip center would be allowed. What else is allowed in neighborhood, commercial?
I'm pretty sure it's just mostly retail. You can't have a drive-through, you can't have, like, the major commercials, the big Walmarts and stuff like that.
Right.
I mean, could they put a Dollar General in there?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, any type of retail like that. Restaurants, I think, would be an allowable use.
Yeah.
So, I don't expect that any of those-
Yeah.
...uses are going to be applicable or desire, given the way the lot's laid out.
Right.
But the zoning would allow it. And what a disaster if someone wanted to put a strip center in the back of this lot that backs up to a bunch of homes. It's just a, it's a mess. Can we hear, can we hear this case with the proposed use as self-storage and discuss it more comprehensively?
You, you could, but we, we often caution against that because, again, you're, you're considering the zoning of the property, which allows any of the uses. And so, I mean, let's say the applicant came forward with a plan you liked, there's no guarantee, once it's rezoned, that that's what they actually do. Now, you can condition the conditional use on a particular site plan.
Yeah, and I understand your point, John, but I, I don't, I wouldn't be interested in rezoning this unless it was self-storage.
I agree.
I would, I would, I would consider it, I think, on condition that it's only self-storage. If it's anything else, I don't, I think it's a terrible idea.
And that's the problem with, with straight rezoning like this is-
Right.
You're allowing anything allowed in neighborhood commercial.
Which is obviously what we're in opposition-
Which is our main, our main concern with-
Right.
-straight rezoning it. We don't have zoning that is specific to self-storage. I understand your concern about the intensity of the development with straight rezoning it, but-
The, the only other option, I think it's, it's large enough that you could do a plan development and then that would, then you could limit it as tightly as you wanted and say, you know, only, you could, you, we would probably, if that was your intent, we would probably propose a PD that keeps the underlying residential zoning, but then allows the additional use of a self-storage, but, but nothing else.
That wouldn't be-
Personally, as, as much as I hate PDs, I think it makes sense here. What do you all think?
I think so.
I agree.
Okay, do you want us to table this or how do you, how do you want us to handle it?
I think that's probably best because our intention, if this zoning passed, was for them to come back with a conditional use. And at that point, we would look at some conditions like what type of screening-
Yeah.
...distance from the adjacent residential of the buildings or, you know, things like that. So those would all have to now be incorporated into the plan development if that's your choice. And while I think technically you could have recommended a PD today, I don't think we have enough details to be able to do that, so that, that would be my recommendation, is table it and we could bring back something more next time.
Okay.
I'm moving that we table.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to table to our next meeting in October. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Six, zero.
I didn't hear, actually.
All right, item 2, Z 2312, a request to rezone 18.046 acres from ranch and estate district to low-rise multifamily residence district and to rezone 10.8 acres from the ranch and estate district to general commercial on a property located at the southwest corner of Loop 306 and Foster Road.
Good morning, Commissioners. Sherry Bailey, Principal Planner. This should look familiar to you. We did come to you about a month ago and let you know that this piece of property, which is presently outside of the city limits, has petitioned to be annexed into the city. As part of that, our practice now is to, if they want a different kind of zoning, rather than have them come in with R and E, they can ask for the rezoning contingent upon it being annexed in and come in at the zoning, go through that process and essentially, we take them both at the same time and this will happen in October. And so they have asked for commercial, which is on the northern portion of the property, and then RM1, which is multifamily. And you can see from the future land use that does go into the ETJ that that is exactly what was recommended, neighborhood commercial, or neighborhood center commercial on the north with the south portion that is neighborhood. They are asking for the 10 acres, almost 11 acres on the north to be commercial and they're asking for the 18 acres on the south to be RM1. We did send out 12 notices, we got zero in favor, but we did get one opposed and I've put the star on the map showing that they are immediately adjacent to the property. Staff is recommending approval of the zoning request from ranch and estate to commercial on the, of the 10 acres and low-rise multifamily RM1 on the southern part of it. With that, are there any questions?
Do you mind going back to the map that, yeah, that-
Which one would you like?
That one's perfect.
Okay.
So there's land on the northern end of this site.
Yes.
Is that-
That's all-
...developable land or is that text dot land or?
No, it is developable and it is already in the city limits.
Okay. Does the applicant own that land?
No.
So, if you could go over a couple of slides, right there to the proposed zoning. So the access to that site is going to be off of Foster Road?
It is. Until there is something that is developed in the future.
I've got concerns on that.
What's the northern land zone?
Where it's general commercial?
I believe it is.
Yeah. Where Old Stone comes down-
Yes.
-that was also commercial, two blocks and then the frontage. And then on the other side where the floodway is, that's still residential state.
All right, anyone else have questions for the staff?
Do we have a mock-up of, I mean, when we were talking about low-rise multifamily in there, I feel like Wolf Creek Apartments was a prime example on what they look like versus what was in the past. And then my, my biggest concern, honestly, is Foster is not adequate. That road, I mean, it floods right there, the road, like, is dilapidated and you're going to put how many low-rise multifamily in, whatever that says, 15 acres or whatever, and they're all-
Eighteen.
-18, feeding out onto a under-improved road that is not very wide, like, I-
Probably 200 units.
Part of the development process for a development like this would be the plating and, which would include the improvement of the adjacent road. So at, at least for the frontage of the subject property, that would be addressed.
Okay.
And we, and we anticipate, you know, one of the reasons this is going forward now is the new sewer line project that's bringing sewer to this area that before did not have sewer.
Yes, sir.
So we anticipate, for example, that commercial frontage would likely develop in the near future as well and they would improve their portion of the road. So from this property back to the loop would likely be improved in the near future accommodating these-
What's the timeline for that sewer project?
That's a good question, yeah, it's 18 to 24 months or so.
Okay.
What type of signage is out on that property right now that the city posted?
That-
You mean, you mean our zoning signs?
Other than our-
Very, very, very small.
Small, yes.
Okay.
That is our norm.
Again, this goes back to, I know our notification boundaries are very limited, so you really are only getting applicants in Old Stone, but I guarantee you, Butler Farms, if any of those people actually knew this was coming and didn't see a 12 by 24 tiny little sign, we'd probably have a lot more people sitting out here today, in my opinion.
Yeah.
And just to remind you, the low-rise multifamily is one or two stories and their development will come in.
And I understand that. My issue is the traffic. That road only goes in, it doesn't come back out, you know?
But this, this would not typically introduce traffic south. I mean, anybody coming here or giving, coming out and, and it is a major arterial adjacent to basically a freeway type road, so based on planning principles, this would be an ideal location for commercial at the frontage-
Yeah.
-with apartments behind it as a transition to a residential area.
Yep.
Okay, that's, that's all I had.
Let's open it up for public comment. Thank you, Sherry. Anyone wish to speak on this case, please come forward, state your name and address or single member district, please.
My name is Alan Price. I live at 1503 Floyd Drive in Butler Farms. I've lived out there for-
Sir? I apologize, but at the very front, if you want to tip that up towards you-
Okay.
There you go, thank you.
Is that better? Okay. I've lived in Butler Farms for about 15 years. I've seen the transition of additional property being utilized, the drainage issues that you've already hit on, the access issues that you've already hit on. Actually, and the signage, I drove by that sign for two weeks before somebody pointed it out to me last week and I happened to look at it. So I'm just now trying to get my handle, my handle on all of this. I don't know enough at this point to know whether I'm opposed or not, other than the, the issue of the access. We've got one way in, one way out of Butler Farms. There's already a lot of traffic coming in at that intersection. You've got drainage issues which are fixed for now. The city did a great job when they put the cans under that low area. Seldom does the water come over anymore, but with more development, we're going to have more issues. But I guess my questions are, and I know it's Mr. Gully's here and he may have more answers than anybody else, would the access to both of these, the commercial and the low-rise multifamily, would that be on Foster Road or would there be access somewhere else direct to the Loop?
It would be Foster based on, the current owner does not own that, the northern section of the property.
Obviously, for those of us, that's our neighborhood, just a few hundred yards south of there, so for, for me, that's, that's a huge concern with the additional traffic that that's going to put on that road. Even if it is widened, you've got those issues. And this is, again, I'm just trying to understand this at this point, in the information that the staff put together, one of the question five is effect on natural environment. Obviously, you've, you've got a, an area on the east side of Foster Road that's usually standing in water from the drainage that comes across. That's a concern. Again, that may be addressed in the, the planning, but that's one of my main concerns. So I've noticed I've got several neighbors here, so I'll let, I'm sure there's other folks that have different ideas. Thank you.
Good morning, Russell with SKG Engineering. The proponent for this actually does own the land to the north of this.
Okay.
The proponent for this actually does own the land to the north of this. And so, their plan is, because this area was not within the city limits, they are requesting the annexation and with that bringing in the zoning. This is all kind of really tying into, in conjunction with that city sewer main extension project. They realize that the property now becomes developable, if you will, with sewer coming through this area. So, the master thoroughfare plan shows Crystal Point, if you will, that's over in Bentwood to the west, coming through and kind of paralleling that AEPV track that's immediately to the south and connecting Foster to Wolf Creek. And so, there will, over time, be a connection made there, but this development ultimately will have a lot of primarily internal circulation that will make some connection out. We've had some preliminary discussions with Text dot about access up to the frontage roads there, so at most, we believe we'll be able to get two access points up to the frontage road. And as Mr. James pointed out, when they come in and plat, they will have the obligation to improve their incremental half of Foster Road through that, for that whole segment there for, as they develop and tie to that. So, that part of Foster will be improved, at least partially, as they develop that area. Now, the concern of drainage, and that's really everybody's concern, and the city ordinance kind of protects that, is as this development goes in, they'll have the obligation and the requirement to limit discharge from this property to existing conditions. So, within this property, at the low point, if you will, there probably will be some type of stormwater detention basin that will then meter out the stormwater at a limited rate. This property here and that low lying that Mr. Price spoke about to the east, they've talked a little bit because they're like, hey, we're way up here high, we've got some extra material, you're in a low spot, you need fill material, so they're, you know, we're the closest cost of fuel trucking, hey, maybe we can work together and try to develop that. We have done and worked with the city to actually kind of look at a way to improve the drainage from the culverts that are placed there in Foster Road and get it around over to where the drainage passes underneath at Loop 306. Part of the challenge is, one, it's just low lying, and there's very little slope to get the drainage from where it crosses at Foster over to there. But there is a way to do that, and the developer of the property to the east and the city had kind of worked out a way in granting of some drainage easements to get drainage over there. So, really, this is kind of a step process. You'll be seeing more of this as we kind of work through this, the annexation request, the zone change, then they're kind of be bringing in some plats and concept plans. And really, the low-rise multifamily is not going to be fully intensive entirety multifamily. There'll probably be within that some single family, some townhomes, some twin homes, but they're just kind of looking through that. And with the RM1 zoning, you have the right to do all of that stuff. So, it's like, that was a very full encompassing, allow us to do just about everything we want to do from the different types of family living, if you will, within that. So, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
I think one of the main concerns that has been raised is access to the general commercial lots. So, are there, you mentioned that the applicant owned the land to the north and that there would be curb cuts on the frontage road. Would there also be curb cuts on Foster Road?
Yes. One, for sure, would be a future connection of Crystal Point Drive as a city street. That's part of the master thoroughfare plan.
I thought you mentioned that was on the south end of this lot.
Well, it is, it is. It goes through the multifamily part. But yes, for the commercial, there, at this point, we don't know the exact layout. There's been some concept layouts, but there will, for sure, would be one that would be closer up to the intersection. You know, we want to sit far enough back, because we don't want to stack an entrance right at the intersection, but 100 to 150 feet back would be, for sure, at least one, and then possibly more, but for sure, the one, and then Crystal Point tying to that.
Okay. Anyone else have questions for Russell?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else wish to speak?
Hi, good morning. I'm Elizabeth Garrett. I live at 1511 Butler Drive. I'm here to speak just for me, myself and my husband. We've lived in Butler Farms for about 11 years now, and I appreciate the information from Mr. Gully. That's all mostly new to me, just like Mr. Price. I did not see the sign that was posted for the rezoning until less than a week ago. And so, all of the information that he was able to present just now is very helpful, appease some concerns, raise some additional concerns. I think that would all be great information for our neighborhood to have prior to a meeting like this where we have the opportunity to voice our own concerns. I would like to raise a different traffic issue than what has already been raised about the curb cuts on Foster Road. As a resident of Butler Farms, and I often have my children with me in the car, I'm coming from both directions on the Loop and coming across the overpass. Oftentimes, when you're coming from the north side of the overpass south, there, that is a intersection from the access road across Foster Road. It is a terrible intersection, and I realize that this may be a DOT issue, and it's probably not something that the developer would be forced to address. But I don't know if residents need to bring this up with DOT, or if the city can request a traffic study there. But certainly adding more traffic to that intersection where the people who are going from west to east across, I don't know if they forget that it's not a four-way stop, or if they are uneducated about it, have not driven through that intersection, but I've almost been hit multiple times by people failing to stop at that stop sign. And similarly, on the north side of that overpass, with the increased traffic from Bentwood using the access road to go across the overpass and then go west on the Loop, when I'm coming home in the mornings especially, I have to sit there for a very, very, very long time. And so, I don't think that developing this could come without some improvements to those intersections as well. And one last thought is, having listened to the last rezoning request, I'm curious, since the master plan calls for, what is it, neighborhood commercial?
Yes.
Since that's already planned for neighborhood commercial, why it must go to general commercial instead of saying neighborhood commercial, and thereby limiting the types of businesses that can go in there? That would just be my own curiosity, what the plans are maybe to go in there that exceed neighborhood commercial, or if they even have any.
Can you guys shed some light on the types of development that general or commercial would allow that neighborhood commercial does not allow?
You might, you might not know, and he may just be trying to keep his options open, but certainly as the, myself and my husband, as residents of Butler Farms, we would prefer to keep that less gas station truck stop-ish and more retail service, if possible.
I'm sorry to interrupt. The main differences would be typically kind of auto-oriented uses, auto repair, auto sales.
In general commercial, not in neighborhood commercial.
Correct.
Can a grocery store go in a neighborhood commercial?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Does that help?
Anybody have questions for me?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for coming and sharing your thoughts. Anyone else wish to speak on this case?
Danny Calhoun, I live in Butler Farms, 1543 Butler. Commissioner is Tommy Hebert. I didn't want to speak. Now, I kind of do want to speak, and I'll keep it as short as I can. They've added a lot of things to this, and it is a problem. Y'all nodded your head yes up and down about the intersection. We all know that's a problem. In 1971, I lived on 607 North Jackson. They bought my house for the thruway, the frontage road. Since 1971, they built Houston Heart, or I mean, yeah, the Loop 306.
Yes, sir.
Around to this point. The bridge coming over this is a four-lane bridge. They've known this problem since 19, whenever they built it, finally in the eighties. And that's a four-lane road, yet we're a, I don't call it Foster Road, I call it Foster Lane. It is not curbing guttered, as Mr. Gully said. They have a curb cut, let's see a curb cut. I'd like to see that.
Yep.
I would like to see where two trucks are driving on it, don't hit their mirrors, if they're wide mirrors, or over wide, not over width trailer, but a regular trailer. Tommy Hebert repaired that road the other day because of all those over width trucks and things have eroded the pavement. Tommy, I've given him credit. Two days later, they were out there repairing the road. I don't know who built the lane. I don't. City did, probably inherited it from the county. I have no idea. River Valley Lane was built first. It's not curbing guttered, so I just assumed that was the same timeframe. Now, here we are, 2023, nothing's improved. The road's too narrow, the road's flooding. The other day, I got excited, there was $4 million plus allocated to fix Foster Road. I called Tommy all excited, whoa, whoa, wait, that's a plan in the future. When is the future going to come to us? There's another relief road that goes down Buckhorn, goes across the river, for crying out loud, that's a dream, okay, to get it over to Canal Road. We'd all love to see it, I think, and give another relief. More traffic on Foster Lane is impossible. It's a problem now. I'm not anti-development. I've done it myself. This one cries out, it's woefully unserviced by the city of San Angelo. We've got to do that $4 million before this property can be developed, as far as I'm concerned. The commercial up there getting a curb cut, we mentioned the rezoning, it's the same person that did it. They did it off of this one, y'all approved it before. And so, general commercial on the front of it, if it's done right, we can peacefully coexist. Right now, we can't.
Right.
It's getting worse and worse. Let's not contribute to it, anymore to it. Let's not contribute anymore runoff. Mr. Gully said probably was the word he used. They're going to have to contain all of the water that they create by putting hard service and getting a coefficient of one, I think it is, one being most of the water runs off. They got to contain it, let it come at us, but right now, the three or four cans on the road will not handle it. Alan said it hadn't flooded since it's been put there. Oh, yes, it has. That's when I asked Tommy Hebert, and he put up the five-foot deal so nobody would get on there and wash away. You can wash away in less than a foot of water, some cars can. It's a problem.
Yep.
It's a dangerous problem. The intersection's now, somebody's going to get hurt and hurt bad. So, I'm for helping, repeat, helping progress in the city. Get something on this vacant land, get it to pay in taxes, maybe mine will go down. But we've got to do it judiciously. It can't create more problems. That's all I can say about it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Thanks for coming.
My name is Stephanie Bass. I live at 1601 Stone Trail Drive in Butler Farms, and I'm here speaking on behalf of me and my husband. Foster Road is a big issue. I can name several times that it was impassable for hours. There was a fire once. My children were stuck on the other side. I was stuck in the neighborhood. I had to borrow somebody else's car to chase down the school bus to go get my children. They could not bring them to me. Another time, there was a head-on collision with a city truck, and the road was shut down for hours again. It's been impassable due to floodwaters, and we have doctors that live out there, we have older people that need emergency services, and I just don't think we can put another tire on Foster Road without improving the road. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else wish to speak on this case? Okay, I'm going to close public comment and have a discussion amongst us up here. The issues that have been raised, I think, are legitimate, and I think my biggest concern, and it's been raised, is Foster Road. And it's, for as long as I can remember, it's a one-way-in, one-way-out road. It's dangerous. It floods, as some of the residents have indicated, it, at times, has been impassable. And I have serious concerns about the intensity of the development that's proposed here going on Foster Road without improvements that are made. I know that annexation is part of this process for rezoning this land. Can you guys share with us what is in the city limits and what is not in the city limits within this Foster Road area? Are the, is the neighborhood south within the city limits?
No, it's not.
Which, Butler Farms is within the city limits.
Okay.
This is largely encircled by the city. Everything to the north is in the city limits. Of course, Bentwood is back to the west.
Yes.
But there are a couple little pockets there that have not yet been annexed.
So, south of this site, directly south?
Directly south is not, but it's not too far till you get to the Butler Farms area that all is within.
To the east.
And so, and then there's a little gap between Butler Farms and Bentwood, that there's kind of a strip that then widens out as you get farther south.
Okay.
But for the most part, this is almost completely encircled by the city limits.
Okay.
I will point out, just for what it's worth, the thoroughfare plan does show Foster Road sort of curving and then extending to the south, so someday, and it could be 30 years from now, someday there will be additional connectivity to that area.
When you say extending to the south, do you mean across the river?
Well, ultimately, that's on the plan, yes.
Okay.
But also, multiple connections back west into Bentwood as well.
Right.
As that area, as Bentwood continues to grow.
Yeah, the Crystal Point or whatever road that Russell alluded to that's coming from the west and Bentwood.
Right, that's just one, but then farther south, there's another one that would continue over.
And that would significantly improve the access in this neighborhood and not, not keep people from getting out or in when there's excessive flooding.
It might not even be in our lifetime.
How many acres are to the north of this that are on Loop 306?
I can tell you, hold on.
I'm going to open it up for public comment for Mr. Gully's thoughts here.
Thank you, Mr. Stripling. And it is, they bring up excellent points and things that we are certainly all concerned about. You know, traffic, that is Text dot right-of-way there, you know, maybe we can go to them and trigger a traffic study or a warrant study. You know, it might be just right now at the cusp that it doesn't justify a full four-way stop there, and if this doesn't develop, then it's going to continue to be extremely dangerous. So, we're kind of in this point of where do we allow development to begin, or do we just stagnate and kill that area, and those connections never get made? And so, we start here at the most logical place, which is up by the main Loop 306 where we have access. As they go in, they start to widen. They have an obligation to take this 20-foot wide county lane, if you will, that's just been there, and now they have, is a collector's street, or I'm sorry, an arterial, they have to at least make their half 32 feet. So, it would be 32 on their half plus 10 for the other side. So, now, for this piece, we're looking at a 42-foot wide street that would have curbing gutter on it that we would get a curb cut on. So, yeah, currently, there is no curbs to cut, but as the development comes in and the street gets widened, we do create that. And I guess when I said there may do detention, there will be some type of stormwater mitigation. Detention, I wasn't trying to avert the requirement, but they have an obligation to limit discharge to existing conditions, which is approximately a 30% runoff coefficient. They pave it, and it substantially increases, so they have an obligation to mitigate that. So, or they have to effectively improve all the way downstream. So, or they have to effectively improve all the way downstream, meaning upsize the structures at Foster Road until it gets all the way to the Concho River. So, so there is that opportunity, but they can't just let it increase without some type of studies, mitigation, and addressing those deals. So, and, and it's great to hear that the city budget is four million dollars to put towards Foster Road. I, I know the ASU Capstone project did a study and, and some designs on that, we've been working with the city on, on improving a, a segment of Foster Road going into that and to address the drainage. So, so this is an area that is primed for development, and hence, you now see the investment coming in of, of the purchase of this land, the sewer, you know, I saw them, they're dug the trench and they're working on a bore underneath the, the Loop Three Oh Six now. So, it's, it's very imminent that the sewer is coming, and so, this is gonna help relieve a lot of areas. So, so the concerns, we absolutely recognize those, and, and we're gonna do our, our best because there are regulations that require improvements and things to be made. So, you know, and if you look at the zoning ordinance between, and I believe immediately north of this is Zone CG, so we're just a continuation of that.
Yeah.
CG, coming back into that, and, and as Mr. James pointed out, it's, it's some of that more intense automotive repair. Now, from what I understand, they're, they're not looking at a full automotive repair. The, the property on the east side of Foster Owens was actually purchased by Susser Holdings, which is tied to Sunoco, which is tied to gas stations. So, you know, one's going in, it might be going in over there, I, I don't know that one would come in at this location. So, we'll, we'll be seeing, and, and more of this will be coming in as, as kind of the development comes, so kind of stay tuned, but this is.
Yeah, I don't, Russell, I don't think, I personally object to the general commercial zoning on the north end of the lot. It, it makes sense, given the highway frontage. The, the concerns I have are the, the impact on the infrastructure, the, the existing roadway, and I, and I understand your point about widening the road. You're responsible for your half of Foster, what about the other half?
Whenever somebody comes in and does that other, develops that east side, then they'll have their obligation.
Right.
Or hopefully, the city, and I don't know, the, the CIP project, where Foster Road is, I, I know a lot of people have Tommy council members' ears that, that that's gonna, they're looking at that, and that's on the CIP project, so hopefully sooner rather than later, and, and this development can help stir and trigger that investment, and maybe help offset some cost if the developer comes in here and does part of it on the front end. So, it's all moving in a direction.
I think that's my biggest concern, I understand in the development agreement that the city has, like for the land to develop, you do your portion of the street, but, and this might be more John and Aaron question, but based on the density of, let's say, they do put apartments in there, again, if you put five, let's just say, five hundred apartments in there, only improving one side of the street is inadequate for that amount of traffic.
Right.
In, in, in an RM1 zoning, the maximum density is twenty-five per acre.
Okay.
I, I don't think we can get to five hundred.
But I'm just saying, in general, I just.
And I, and I think we'll absolutely reach out to TechStop, and, and based on what we're hearing, you know, as this develops, TechStop, please study this, or they, TechStop may say, we won't, but you can hire someone to do a traffic impact analysis and a warrant study to justify that, because this developer probably would wanna see a four-way stop there.
Yeah.
Only for the safety of this, this whole area. So, it's, it's great points that we can take forward and, and address.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Russell.
Russell, are you aware of any other opportunity to fix Foster Road other than that four million down the road? So, if we don't approve this, then everything stays status quo for undetermined amount of time. There's no relief on Foster Road for any reason?
Other than the four million that the council just approved, and, and I don't know what the timeframe is on that, but I'm not aware of, of anything else. As, as we all know, there's a lot of infrastructure needs in the city, and so, those high priority ones are.
Because this reminds me of Cox Lane, where we've had multiple accidents, and we finally allowed, you know, that road to be modified, I think was finally approved. But, yeah, this is, if we don't start something, you know, to, to start the traffic studies, to take a look at the overall traffic, to put more pressure on fixing Foster Road, I have a feeling it's gonna just stay the same, we'll still have the issues we have today. So, this is, you know, from one standpoint, I agree with everyone, it is more traffic, but you've gotta start someplace. And if there's no other plans, I don't know where we go from here.
And they're all, the, the developer also have an obligation for a sidewalk on their side of Foster Road because it is an arterial, so.
That's true.
Thank you, Russell. Okay. All right, I'm gonna close public comment.
Drainage ditch.
Threaded out, I, I think your point is legitimate. I, the, the concern I have, what if the, what if the multifamily gets developed first? And then we've got an irregular jog, they're, they're not gonna be required to improve the commercial frontage on Foster Road if they do multifamily on the southern end, are they? And so, it's a, it's, it's a little dangerous to consider the amount of traffic that this site would put on Foster Road and the way that it sits today. There's no question it needs to be improved, and I think it needs to be improved beyond what the developer would be required to improve, and that's the concern I have about the zoning.
Is there already a commercial building back in there?
There's like some, like further back on the same side, there's like some kind of warehouses.
Yeah, I think there's a telecommunications tower back there, and there may be somebody's private stuff, but it's, those, those are actually areas.
Yeah, it's. They pop up around Christmas.
Oh, okay. It sounds different.
I believe those are areas that are outside the city limits currently.
And that, there is, there is a big storage building across from.
There's a telecommunications business and then the little Christmas store.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that, is that business, that business is not, the telecommunications business is just an, I mean, it's just a storage unit?
Just a structure.
There's an actual business there. There's an actual business, I know about it.
I do too, that's why I was wondering, I mean, I know exotic expressions is a business, but the, the, the stor, the, everything across in that same parking lot is exotic expressions, that, that's not a business across from them, it's just storage.
The warehouse is a business.
Okay.
Telecommunications business, and then the first thing that when you come into the left is the Christmas store.
Right, gotcha, okay.
Exotic expressions.
Yeah, gotcha.
Okay.
Calhoun's speaking again, just a minute.
Okay, I'm gonna open up public comment for Mr. Calhoun.
Again, do not want to speak again. Your point's well taken, and yours also, and I feel like we're all getting to know each other, we're around the fire right now, we're talking, and Mr. Gully is certainly ahead of me, put twenty-five per acre, I don't know what in the heck that meant, you know, so twenty-five watt per acre.
Units.
Okay, I'm behind the curve on that because I'm a, I'm a sleepy retired guy.
Twenty-five times eighteen.
Okay.
That's the maximum density. Now, I don't expect that they would achieve that kind of density with this development, but.
Yeah, I, I don't wanna, I'm sorry, I never could hear you well because you're not close enough to the microphone, Brittany, so I didn't hear what you said, it's funny and I love humor, but anyway, I don't wanna get too humorous about this, this is a serious matter to all of us that live there on a dead-end street.
Yes, sir.
We moved to a dead-end street, we wanted to live on a dead-end street.
Right.
Now, it's getting complicated by the fact that there could be more traffic up there. There is gonna be a lot, I cannot get to Home Depot and back without a traffic light like I do now, okay? And, and I want that, I can't get to Lowe's, but I can get to Home Depot.
I don't know if we can, I don't know if we can keep that from happening forever. Sorry.
It's a, it's progress.
It is.
And we need to watch our progress.
Yeah.
That it doesn't harm a bunch of other people. And so, how do we fund it? And I said the four million dollars, I don't say that they passed it, I saw it on a seven-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar budget for a wish list, a wish list. That's what Tommy pointed out, Tommy, Mr. Hebert, Councilman Hebert, I'm not putting him on the spot here, don't go running to him and said, I said this, I, I, he's my, I'm, he's my ally, I'm his ally. Okay. And I am Butler Farm Homeowner Association President, interim president, by the way. So, woof, big deal. Here, here's the, here's, here's the thing, I don't wanna laugh this into y'all voting and approve this thing, and I don't feel like I did enough. And, and several of these people back here are from the Homeowner Association. I did not send this to the full Homeowner Association.
Yeah, Mr. Calhoun, you're headed exactly where I was going.
Okay.
And that is that, I, and Brittany addressed this a minute ago, the, the notice on this lot is probably not adequate for the impact that it has on the surrounding area. We went through a very similar case in, in the Bluffs years ago, and, and we had a handful of residents that were upset about the development, and most of the neighborhood didn't understand that the development was going in, and I can't remember the road that it's on, it's across from the TLCA. Was it, yeah, Melrose. So, it's a major thoroughfare in and out of the Bluffs, that impacts a lot of homes. And so, that personally, but I, I'm gonna let you finish your thoughts, and then I'm gonna.
Yeah, 'cause I'll get out here pretty quick.
Okay.
Crystal Point is something I would support, how in the heck they pay for it, the developer's going to.
Yes, sir.
I don't know, but it's a relief. The other one's pie in the sky to cross the lake, cross Metcalf Lake.
Right.
South Concho River, that's.
Long, long, long range.
It's been a pie in the sky for forty years.
Yes, sir.
Since they built the four-lane bridge over Loop Three Oh Six.
Yep.
And so, that's probably, that ship has sailed, but Crystal Point is something that would work, but you gotta fund it.
Yes, sir.
I don't know how they'll do it, I'm all for it, to let everybody have another way out.
Projects like this would help fund it.
Yeah.
Because they'd be required to put it on the south end of their site.
Right, and it's gonna cost a lot of money.
It is.
The sewer line is coming through there somewhere.
Yep.
And we've got a sewer line going in our backyard, and I need to get to it because they're coming back to work today. I'm the civilian engineer on it. So, I thank you for your time, I just don't want us, any of us to rush into this thing.
Yes, sir.
And get some, get another, I wanna, I don't wanna kick it down the road, kick the can down the road anymore, but.
Yes, sir.
Let's be judicious.
Thank you, Mr. Calhoun. Yes, sir, Mr. Gully.
I'll put everybody out of, out of their misery, if you can table it for a month, we'll get with Mr. Calhoun and whomever else in Butler Farms, and let us introduce, it's local, it's, two of the developers are local.
Yes.
People, so I'll have them reach out, if we need to go sit down, talk through it, maybe we can share, they have some site plans, try to address all of this, and we can come back and, and be in a better place.
Yeah, and, and the, the other thing I think that's important here, I, I think the city council, I think the community needs to understand the impact of this development and the need to make improvements to Foster Road beyond what your client would be required to do on their site. So, thank you, Mr. Gully.
Russell, could you also take a look at Crystal Point? When, when you develop Crystal Point, you're driving all that traffic right into Bentwood, into the major housing area, you know, Crystal Point is not the savior, it's just, it's gonna make a mess in Bentwood.
It's a relief.
It is, it's somewhat of a connector relief, you know, Bentwood is, is exactly aware of that, and, and for some of the plating and things they've done in that area, Bentwood has wanted to preserve Bentwood and keep all of us outsiders out of Bentwood, if you will, easily, unless, you know, so, so yes, I, I think that the connection of Crystal Point to Bentwood is in the future, you know, that the Old Stone's gotta develop the rest of the way, the property between Old Stone and Bentwood's gotta develop, and, and a lot of that is just sitting and waiting on that sewer main, but, but sure, it, it is, I, I, I see a connection to, of Crystal Point to Bentwood, probably no sooner than seven to eight years out, just because of the time it's gonna take to develop this.
Yeah, 'cause we've just approved all that housing, and when you take a look at, I'm looking at all the housing that's there on Crystal Point, it, it almost looks like an emergency exit only out of the, you know, Butler Farms area, because if you go down that way, you're gonna hit probably worse traffic than going down Foster.
Well, and I'm, I'm gonna get off in the weeds a little bit, but there's even been some high-level discussions with some property owners in the area of trying to figure out how to push Old Stone Road south and create, because that bridge, I, I don't see it happening in, in my lifetime, and I'm an old man now, I feel like. So, so anyway, yes, let us table it, we'll have a discussion and come back and, and hopefully have some answers.
Thank you.
I just have a general, not.
Okay, I'm gonna close public comment before Brittany.
Question for the city staff, so when these agendas are being brought to you, are you guys, like Russell mentioned, that they've got some mockups of what it could potentially look like, are you guys seeing that in your meetings? And if so, why are we not seeing it to be able to make a more educated decision?
We typically don't see that at this stage. The, part of that answer is, again, like with the last case, you're approving the zoning, and it can often be misleading. In fact, one of my very first cases, I worked a zoning case, the developer stood up, presented his plan, everybody loved it, two weeks later, he, after he got the council approval, he sold it to somebody else, and it became an auto repair shop.
Yeah.
Which nobody wanted or expected. And so, again, you're, you're approving the zoning that would allow anything allowed in that zoning, and so, that's one reason we're hesitant to show that kind of information, although if we do have it, we will often show it to you, but with that caveat.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so, based on the discussion, I, I would like, I'd like for the signage, the notice to the neighborhood to be more substantial than it's been, and I don't know how to do that, I'm gonna ask the staff to, to maybe come up with some ideas on how to get the word to the Butler Farms community of this project, and encourage them to, to participate in the discussion of, of this development, and, and maybe encourage them to work with their, with their council members and, and staff to encourage the development of Foster Road beyond this.
Well, I have a question on that too, is, for example, in this case, there is a HOA, so are HOAs notified? I mean, that's a great resource in situations like this.
Too far away.
From where it's at, okay.
Typically not, if, if we are aware of an HOA, there are some that we have notified because we, we know of them, we have a contact information for them. I think in this case, that would be the best way to reach them. Just as a reminder, a few years ago, we were over notifying, we called it, on, on cases like this, and city council directed us to only notify what's required by state law.
Right.
And, and so, but, I mean, and I, that sounds worse than, than I meant for it to sound, but their, their concern was staff picking and choosing, well, in this case, we're gonna notify more people, but in this case, we're not, so, I, I mean, we, we could definitely do it differently this time, but if we were going to do that, I think we would want some direction from the commission, you know, do we wanna go out five hundred feet instead of two hundred feet, or do we wanna work with the homeowners association?
In this case.
Yes.
That's where I'm on this one, they're notify, Russell's gonna get with the homeowners association, go with them, and I think that'll work moving forward on this case. It, it's a special case, it's a challenging case, 'cause everything that's affected is actually outside of the area, and so, yeah.
And I think that, you know, is something that we all need to discuss with city council on the notifications, I understand two hundred feet of a property with an STR, but when you're talking about potentially the ability to put four hundred and fifty units in.
On Foster Road.
On Foster, like, and, and not necessarily just Foster Road, just in general, like, that density, I feel like our notification area has to be considerably wider because there's so many people being impacted, especially when you're dealing with half the land around this being ranching estate.
Yeah.
You know, that's one owner versus, you know, Old Stone or Butler Farms, when you've got considerably more. I also think that we need to have a discussion with, with city staff and city council on the size of signage. Again, a tiny little sign on a stake is fine for a short-term rental, but when you're looking at a development or something that's this large in scale, it should be a four-by-six foot, you know, like basically a resident, and you, you'll probably agree with me.
I agree and disagree, but.
But it needs to be larger, especially again, I mean, given, again, in this case, the traffic patterns on that street, how narrow that street is, you're not gonna see that tiny little sign.
But how many people see it and just drive by, oh, I'll check on that later, and then they never do until it's too late.
Okay.
And I do that.
Part of that, too, is, I think the key that we're saying here is, notice has to be reasonable, right? And at this point, with this particular property, the notice that has been conveyed is, is not, it doesn't meet the level of reasonable. And I think that's the point. And I think that's where, in discussing with city council, or, you know, the powers that be, and again, I'm still new here, so forgive me, but, is, um, you know, what is reasonable per each property? You know, and that, I think that's the key, and, and appreciating what you're saying about, you know, you don't have any obligation to go outside what is required-
Fair and consistent.
And that makes, that makes, no, you know, I get that, but also what's been done here isn't, isn't really reasonable for the amount of impact and the number of people. And when it comes to HOAs and whatnot, like, those are, those are indeed, so you should know about them. I mean, um, and it, and again, it also limits, here, here's the other thing I have, and I think something that Brittany mentioned, and one, one question I had, I sent an email a couple of weeks ago requesting to get what people receive for short-term rentals. Never got a response on that. But, um, my point with this is that sometimes what is communicate, I think the other part of notice is conveying what you got, conveying everything that you possibly can to residents so that they come here with a little more information, um, to, to decide whether they're opposed or not opposed, or whatever that may be. And I understand we can't do that with each particular proposed, um, development, but even as it relates to zoning, I mean, we couldn't really even answer a question as to what the difference between general commercial and residential, I mean, that's a big thing, and those things should be communicated to people who are interested in, in having an opinion. And they shouldn't have to sit here and wait for two hours to, to not get their questions answered. So if we can communicate that and notice, I think that needs to happen.
Okay, so to John's point, I, the notice has to be fair and consistent, and I, I take from his comments that he would like for us to advise the staff on how to improve notice for this case. So, we've talked about the HOA, I think we notified the HOA about this project. I would also like to have these signs, there's a picture here of the sign, it looks like, that's running parallel to Foster Road. Can we turn the sign and put it on Foster Road where, as you're passing in and out of the neighborhood, you see the sign, get it close to the road so that everyone understands what's coming? And, uh, unless someone feels different, uh, I think, I think it makes sense to continue this.
Yeah, we could definitely do that. We, we can definitely put more signs, that's, we sometimes do that on large properties just to make it more visible.
Yeah.
Or, or if it's on an intersection, for example, we'll put it on both side streets.
Yep.
But we can, I, I, for this one, I don't know that we could have a bigger sign in time, you know, for next month, but that's something we can also look at, is- Sure, we can, we can look at that as well-
Thank you.
For the larger sites or sites like this.
Okay, so would, would anyone like to make a motion on this case?
I move that we table till next month.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue this to the October meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Six, zero. Thank y'all. Okay, I'm gonna jump forward. I'm gonna go into conditional uses, case three. So the planning commission has final authority for approval of conditional uses, appeals may be directed to the city council. CU 2344, a request for conditional use for a short-term rental at 2950 Red Bluff Circle in RS1 zoning district. Sorry for the, the mix-up, Mr. Vinoy.
That's okay. Good morning, everyone. Aaron Vinoy, Assistant Director of Planning and Development Services. I'll move our screens forward until we get to that short-term rental. Here we are.
Here we go.
Twenty, twenty-nine fifty Red Bluff Circle. It is a request for a conditional use for a short-term rental in RS1 zoning, District One, Tommy Hebert in the Nazworthy neighborhood. This here is just a picture of the parking that they have, that they have improved over the last year or so. The, I believe they bought this property about a year and a half ago, maybe two years ago, and they've been doing improvement, improvements on it ever since. Here's our large map of the Nazworthy area, and before you start looking at all the stars and everything like that, the current request is right here. We have another request also across the lake on Mary, just on Joy Road, but to, this request is right here in Red Bluff Circle.
Yes, sir.
There was a denial on a Red Bluff, and I want to say that was Ramp Road. I know that we have too many Red Bluff-
Yep.
Stuff, but that's where that is. You can see the, the green ones that have now come into compliance have been approved with the conditional use and with the CO. They were, um, kind of in blue, probably in the previous meeting or meeting before. Currently, there are no properties out there that are just a CU but haven't gone forward in the process. So you can see, there's a number of them now, that we're gonna have basically five, what, what I call active, they're actually have all of their stuff and they're active. So if this is approved, it would be number six in that Nazworthy area. Here's the overhead. We did mail eleven notices. You see that there was zero in favor, but I did get one over the weekend. That is a mail-in, and it's from twenty-nine fifty-four Red Bluff Circle, from a Ms. Jones, and she did say that she was in favor. So it's one in favor and one opposed, which is the actual property right there to the right. You can see the subject property is kind of outlined in red. The one thing I would note on this particular property is, there is this large area that's accessed between all of these properties, but the home is significantly to the back of the property. Now you can see there's a patio and a large dock off here. This property here might be more impacted, although this property is very large and wide, there, I'm gonna say that that's their home there and their parking there, I'm not 100% sure, but that's just my assumption. But again, things that happen here could obviously impact properties on either side. We did look at this, it does seem to meet our current standards for short-term rental. They do have the off-street parking, and we would just ask that they maintain those, they go through the rest of the process if they're given this conditional use of obtaining a certificate of occupancy through the permits and inspection divisions, as well as getting annual fire inspection through fire, uh, through the Fire Marshal's office. And then, as well as comply with anything else, that was in 406 of our ordinance, which happens to be the hotel taxes, that they register for those locally, as well as state, and we have a process that's been implemented for those things. With that, I'll take any questions.
You know, they have to access through another property, who owns that property?
Well, this property right up here, this is City of San Angelo access property. They actually have a little bit of sewer lines and grinder pumps in here that actually access, so the city owns-
That's the city owns.
That's the city owns that, as well as access back to the actual roadway.
Okay.
Does this property have a dedicated driveway from Red Bluff to the home or to the lot?
Yes, it does.
It's not shared by the neighbors?
That's a good question. I, well, as you can see here, in this area towards here, it does kind of become a shared driveway.
Yeah.
As you get closer to its own individual, it turns into its own, and it's been majorly improved in here. This overhead image is from 2020, and so-
Yeah.
Today, that has been improved. So, I would say it's definitely partially shared, I mean, because they all kind of come together right in this area.
Yes, sir.
And I can see that that may be a concern for some of the neighbors.
Just asking.
The applicant or the representative for the applicant is here, so they can probably answer that.
Yeah, perfect. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Vinoy. That's, yeah, if you don't mind leaving that up.
There, sure.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna open it up for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on this case, please come forward. State your name and address or single member district.
Hey, good morning. I'm Patrick Egan. I'm at twenty-nine forty-two Red Bluff Circle. I'm the neighbor with the large property.
Okay.
In the mid-nineties, I bought a lot next to this lot that's requesting the short-term rental, and my dad bought a lot. We came before you guys and combined those two lots, that's why our lot is significantly larger than our two neighbors. So this picture that we're looking at is, that, that is their parking inside the fence. However, when you pull up to the property, we have a much larger piece of property, and parking is definitely going to be a problem, um, as they pull up to the property, as a renter looks where this Airbnb or VRBO is going to be. So parking is the number-one thing that I've got. Number two, of course, are the house numbers. You know, we're readily identifiable, right now they are not. And I've got pictures that I wanted to share on my phone, but I was told that there's no AirPlay or, or, uh, Apple that I can throw this up onto the screen, is I correct? I did send an email this morning to planning at City of San Angelo with all the pictures that I have.
Okay.
So just in case you didn't get them, I do have some photos if I can come forward.
Oh, please, that'd be great. Uh, just to clarify, is that your roof on the left side of the picture?
Yes.
Okay. Yep. Just making sure we're oriented.
This is a higher-level picture of my friend.
It's a great photo.
So, as you can see there, and I do not, I've just been told, like I said, we bought the property in the mid-nineties, okay? If you look to the left of that picture, and where I've got Mark Egan's driveway, I've been told that the property line runs right down the middle of that.
Okay.
So, along with the driveway out front being shared, that we paved on city property years ago-
Right.
That driveway down to the water is split, 50/50. That means that they have no access to the water without using my property. And once you're down there, there's no way to get back up. There's no way to get back up there, other than backing up and trying to get through that opening. So my concern with this is that when they have renters and they want to take their kayaks and such to the water and drive them down there, 'cause that's the easiest way to do it, they drive through their ungated fence line onto the property, 50/50.
Yep.
Now, they recently had a survey done, and, um, they're, they're super nice people, and, uh, I asked Delbert, um, you know, if, if he was surveyed, that the property line in fact does run down the middle of that driveway? And he says he thinks it does, but I never saw any marks, um, survey markings.
Yeah.
And so that's a, that's a shared area there that is obviously the biggest concern, because once they're on our property, they've got to roll, roll out onto the grass and turn around, and, and Delbert said, you know, that he, we've already talked, we're friendly neighbors, um, but, uh, he said he's drawn some stuff up that will, um, take care of my concerns. But, uh, I kind of live by the motto, "It's easy to get something started, it's hard to get it stopped." I heard that you only have one opposition. Donna Weatherford is my neighbor on the other side. She's a sweetheart, but she, you know, we gave her permission to do something, and she got a bad contractor, and now I got pool equipment on my fence line at my front door, not completely her fault. So, she's in opposition as well. I think she failed to mail in or email her opposition, but she has the letter with her.
Okay.
So it was also brought to my attention, um, by the people requesting the short-term rental, that they purchased under a 1031 exchange, they have to turn this into commercial property, so their intent was to do this from the beginning. I wasn't notified about that when I first met them. You know, we just try to be an example, you can tell by the pictures of what a Lake Nazworthy property should look like, and, you know, you could ask me, "Why don't you want an Airbnb or short-term rental?" I think that's self-explanatory, you know? You get good, you get some good renters and you get some bad ones. And I talked to Delbert, and he said, "Well, if we, if we don't get this, then we're gonna turn it into rental property," and then my response to that was, "Well, I'd rather have one renter, you know, for a year or two than fifty-two guys coming and going with boat trailers and such."
I, I just want to clarify with the picture. There's an opening on the back-left corner of this, uh, picture of the driveway. Is that the, uh, access to the-
Yes, sir, that's exactly correct.
The driveway that goes down to the waterfront?
Yeah, and all my pictures that I gave you guys, um, I gave you a picture of us looking up where that o- opening is, and I do not have a picture-
Is it wide enough to get a vehicle through it?
Yes. Yes, it is, but it's very difficult to back up it as well. Now, um-
It's not very, it's not a very wide driveway.
It's, it, the, once you get onto the concrete, it is. I mean, it's wide enough that I took the, uh, you know, I took the time to put a gate in there so that my friends wouldn't be tempted to drive down that with their, you know, boat trailer or their kayaks and their pickup.
Okay.
So the, the gate, um, the parking out front, and of course, the house numbers making the, the property readily available, and I, I put everything on the table with my neighbor here, you know, we're good, you know? So I think he's ready to respond to all of my concerns, but let me walk away from letting you know that I am in opposition, even if all these things are put in writing-
Conditions are met.
You know, it's just, it can take a Big Mac, you know, with the wrong people there for the weekend.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I understand.
Any questions for me?
I just want to make, uh, a clarification. The-
Do you have my email?
I'm sorry?
Do you have that email, is that what you're showing them? Turning it up? Oh, okay, okay. I was hoping maybe you had my email with the-
My question would be, um, I just want to clarify something you said so that I understand you correctly. The drive that you made, um, between your house and this proposed, um, a short-term rental, to take a boat down or a kayak or whatever with a truck or whatever, is on your land?
Half of it. I believe half of it is. So if I, if I walk away here and, and, you know, and you guys say, "Hey, maybe we should have this surveyed first," you know, to make sure that line does run down the middle, or maybe, um, Delbert and Laura are gonna come forward and say, "Yes, it, you know, we do have the survey that shows that." I have the plot, but that is not like a satellite photo that-
Right.
Shows the driveway. So to answer your question, not, not the concerns outside for the parking or the driveway that we have, um, out front, but going down to the water, yes, ma'am.
That's the one I was talking about.
That is, that is what we understand is 50/50, and I've never had a problem with the neighbor, you know, we just, we just both use it, you know? But please look at that picture and understand that we just look like we're open for business all the time, you know? It's just, it's, it's a large piece of property, we spend a lot of money on water, you know, to keep the grass the way it is, and, uh, we just, we like to be, like to think of us were example of what Lake Nazworthy property should look like, as a lake house.
Do you use the driveway that you think is half-
Yes, we do.
-on your property for access?
We do.
And do you access it off of your property?
Off of my property? I open the gates and I drive down.
Okay.
But I, we, uh, we don't use it, we don't kayak, we don't paddleboard, I've got a Mastercraft ski boat, and, uh, you know, that's already in the water from another boat ramp, and when we use it, we just redid our boat, uh, boat dock. We just resurfaced that, redecked it, and so that's when we used it.
Okay.
And Gerald Stokes, that was our neighbor before, I mean, we just, we just go down there where we want, he understood, stay off the grass, so.
Curiosity, 'cause I, I've got the COSA map of where the drive falls. Have you discussed with the applicant on, like, cutting off tenant, like, use-
Restricting access? Yeah, I have, and, uh, I think he's gonna come forward with a, a grain to put a gate in.
Okay.
But I, but like I said, I'm, we're still in opposition of it. We just don't, we don't want an Airbnb out there, we've been there over three decades, and we try to keep things, you know, as, as peaceful as possible.
Yes, sir.
And, um, I think, uh, if Donna Weatherford comes forward, she's gonna have an opposition letter, and she's aware of, and I think that, uh, that, um, Delbert and Laura, the neigh, the applicants, I think they're aware of somebody a couple doors down, they're doing a rental illegally. And if they, they came forward and wanted to do it, um, or they said, he told me that if they were doing it legally, we couldn't do it, 'cause it was within so many feet. And then the property that got shut down on Red Bluff Ramp was, uh, I talked to David And then, the property that got shut down on Red Bluff Ramp was, I talked to David Barnett about that, and that was because they were too close, in too close proximity. So, the neighbor next to the applicant, she's on top of the applicant, so it surprised me that, I think it's Jordy, Jordy and Taylor Harrison wanted to go ahead and approve that or in favor of, because they're really, really close.
Okay.
Okay. Any more questions?
So, there's no fencing between you and your neighbor right now?
No, it, that driveway butts up against their, their property, up against their house, actually.
Okay.
And so, I mean, worst-case scenario, I rip out my concrete and put a fence down it, and nobody's going down it.
Okay.
Concrete on my side.
Right.
You know, so... Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Appreciate it.
Hi, here's my letter. I'm Donna Weatherford. I live at 2934 Red Bluff Circle, and I'm here on behalf of myself and my husband, and we too are opposed. And I'll just say that I moved here from the beach in North Padre Island, so I am familiar with short-term rentals. I lived in an area where they had short-term rentals, and let's just say, they don't always make the best neighbors, unfortunately. And we are opposed to transient neighbors. I mean, they come in on Thursday, it's a big party generally, it's an excessive alcohol situation. And we got the letter saying they're going to make it a luxury rental. It's probably going to be a contactless rental where they don't see who's actually renting.
Right.
They're going to come in, they won't know who's renting. You can vet your renters, but you actually really don't know who's coming into your property. It's generally a party. I know that the rental that they're referring to, that they say is an illegal rental, they definitely are renting somehow, but they bring in quite a few boat trailers to this property. And I'm not saying that they'll rent, their renters will, but they can't really probably accommodate the parking in that situation, because it's very limited as far as the space that they have. And they do share a driveway with not only the neighbors on the right, but they also share a driveway with the Agans. I'm on the other side of the Agans and have clear view of their backyard and what have you, or their decking. And they, you know, unfortunately, probably don't really know what's going on at their property all the time. As a matter of fact, they had some work done over there, and the workers were jumping off of their two-story deck, having a good old time the other two weeks ago, I guess it was. So, I would just say that in our experience with short-term rentals, where my husband and I have had, it's excessive noise, it's excessive trash, it's generally excessive alcohol, it's a party, and it breaks continuity of a neighborhood. And when we moved here, we really didn't think we were going to have to deal with that. And unfortunately, I think it's probably not right for our neighborhood, and certainly not right in the cluster of homes that we're in. And so, we're strongly opposed to the approval of this short-term rental. And I thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Weatherford.
And who wants my letter?
Okay.
Gentlemen, right there. Thank you.
And I'm sorry, can I get clarification from either the applicant or the gentleman that spoke previously, Aaron, somebody? The driveway that is shared going down to the lake, it's that, that little space? Okay, okay. Just want to make sure I was understating that.
But he's also got, he has a gate on his side that goes down that same driveway.
You can just see it under the red line, that there's the concrete.
Yeah, I could see it when I looked at the COSA on the bottom part. I was just trying to figure it out from the top.
Ah, a survey.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, the shared driveway that they're talking about is on the city side of the right?
Okay. Hi.
Hello. My name is Delbert Richards, Laura Richards. We own the property at the 2950 Red Bluff Circle. We have talked to Patrick, his concerns. We have a letter already written up to basically close that shared, which he was correct. We have a survey. The survey is 50, 40, 50/50 on the cement drive going down. We understand his concern of people using that for, just to dock things. So, we've drawn up a paperwork with, to show him that we'll comply with his request to close that entrance with a lock gate. With, also, we share, we've got a gate in between me and him, where when you go down the cement, we can cut back into our property without getting into his grass. That lake, that gate will also be locked where nobody can get it. We have a four-foot fence all the way down on both sides of our properties that we can put no trespassing signs, guarantee that these people will lose their contract, will be immediately kicked out if they do anything like trespass across anybody's property lines.
Okay.
And we're not wanting to upset or be noisy neighbors or unfriendly neighbors. We want to keep, this is something that we need to do as a 1031, which, when we bought it, was understood that that's what it was, we could do this.
And we have a lot of friends that have, their kids go to school here, they're always looking for a place to stay. We've had friends who have companies that would like to rent it, and so, we're wanting to use it as a high-end rental. Our intent is not for parties. We would, we know the city ordinances, those would be enforced. We feel we have more control over a short-term rental with booting people out versus having a long-term rental. There's more control. We have family that lives in town to be here. We have, that will be able to help us. We sent out letters, I have the dates written, but it was mid-August. We mailed personal letters out to everybody that, there was 15 letters written out. So, we kind of went six or seven houses on either side of us, put our name, number, what our concern was. Please call us with any concerns. I have had, we had had two phone calls with people who had their concerns. Well, one was a concern, one was to just, and it's our immediate neighbor that greatly affects. We are right together. It's the, would it be the 2952?
The west side?
Yeah, the left side of us that are, I have their message of they're in full support of it. I had a phone call from another lady. She had some concerns. I addressed them, and she told me there was some opposition in the neighborhood. And I told her, "Please tell them, we're open to comments, your criticism, whatever, whatever we can do." So, but we never heard from some of them. We did have a letter that was returned, and I believe it was probably Patrick's.
It was Patrick's.
It was Patrick's letter, because they don't get mail out there. So, so, I think in his defense, he just found out about this probably when he got the letter from y'all. But we had previously put letters out, because we wanted it to hear, you know, the people to hear it from us, of what we were planning on doing.
Yes, ma'am.
Also, another Patrick's concern was the numbering on the gates. I've got big, black letters or numbers to go on each side of my fence, so that they would be able to see them from the highway and not go onto their, anybody else's property but our property.
Okay.
And we're in the process of still working on this. It is still a work in progress. And we have already made massive improvements to it compared to what it was when we got it. And we're not through. The gate going up at the top is an easy, due to key...
Easy add.
We have all kinds of lake equipment, and we've never once, you can't unload, you can't drive down and unload a boat. There's a gate all along the sidewalk.
No, there's, it's just not, we're not going to allow it. Our contractors, our contractors, just like Patrick's contractors when they were redoing their dock, we utilize, that is what that's for.
For access.
That is not for our people who rent it, or even my family, to pull boats down there and try to unload that.
There's not a ramp at the, at the end of the driveway?
It's not a ramp at the end. It's just the dead ends.
Yeah.
And then, there's a little bit of grass, and then, the sidewalk, and then, our double-wide gate that opens up to where we can go into our property from his side.
Yes, sir. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you very much.
The amount of parking that was put in there will hold seven cars.
Okay.
In our little cement area that we tore all that out and redid.
It looks, it looks like a sizable area.
Yeah. It's, you, it would take some maneuvering, but I keep boats, trailers, and everything into that point.
Okay.
So, and if any, our, everybody uses the park next to it, kind of to park out in there if there is any other over-parking. But we don't plan on letting that many people be there.
Thank you all. Thank you.
All right. Does anyone else wish to speak on this case?
I'm Jerry Lancaster. I live, my wife is Loretta back here. We live in Midland at 1003 Woodland Park Avenue. But I'm, I noticed y'all skipped over the Joy Road, and I'm really here to speak on the Joy Road.
Yes, sir.
But I'm also against any short-term rental anywhere on the lake.
Okay.
But when it's, I just wanted to be sure you didn't skip over Joy Road.
Oh, no, we're going to get to it.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
So, I just have a question. If, are you, I'm not sure how this works. This is my first short-term rental request.
Yes, sir.
Opposition hearing. So, if you guys move forward, are they legally bounded to obey by the promises that they make? Like, like a renter is not allowed to use the joint-use concrete to the lake?
Well, I think that we could stipulate that a gate with a lock and limited access be a part of a condition if we were to approve it. This would, this would go to the city council for final approval?
No.
No?
Only on appeal.
Only on appeal.
That's what, I talked to Tommy Ebert, and that's what he said.
Okay.
You know, to voice my concerns and conditional uses.
Yes, sir.
And, and just, I want you guys to look at those pictures. I mean, my parking compared to theirs, I mean, if I'm renting something and nobody's at that house, and my gates are wide open, like I say, we're just open for business all the time.
Right.
You know, our fountain's running, our gates are wide open, our parking is very inviting. And when you go down there, and that's great, he's going to lock that gate, but it's a wrought iron gate that's four feet tall, the one down by the water in the grass, you step over that and you're on my property. And you have access to my dock and fishing off. I just did a, we just spent X amount of dollars. We did basically a sidewalk retaining wall. It's 30 inches wide.
Wow.
And, you know, we've just spent too much time, effort, and money, and we've been there too long for the neighborhood to go this direction, okay? Thank you, guys.
I understand. Thank you.
Just one other thing.
Sure.
I know that they live about two hours away or 130 miles. Who's going to be enforcing any of this?
I believe that the applicants spoke about having some local family that would help with issues on-site.
They are required to have a local operator under our ordinance, and they did provide that.
Looks like there's a gentleman sitting with them that's local.
Yes.
We have two.
We have two.
And y'all live in, y'all live at the lake?
I live in town. We both live in town, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. I'm going to close public comment and take thoughts or emotion.
Getting more challenging.
I'm sorry? Yes, I'm going to open public comment. Robin, please come up.
The, to the east, is that right? The neighbor to the east that's opposing it, that is not their homestead.
Okay.
And they have quite a bit bigger lot, their house is quite a bit further away. The neighbor to the west that is closer.
Yes.
It is their homestead, and they are all for doing that. So, the one that is opposed, it's, it's not even their homestead. They don't receive mail at that address. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Ma'am, can we get your name for the record, please?
Yes, sir. Robin Tidwell.
Thank you.
Thank you, Robin.
Okay, I'm going to close public comment. The, the concerns about the access to the shared driveway, I think, are legitimate. And if, if we, if there's a motion to approve it, I would, I would ask that we consider adding a locked gate to restrict access if, if we're going that route.
And this might be a silly question or request, because I know if you are, I know everyone said that you're not technically bringing boats and whatnot down that. But would the applicant consider even putting a fence on their side of the property next to, like, within a certain distance of that drive, just again, showing that that is off-limits, not just a gate? I mean, I'm just throwing some options out. I don't know if that's possible either. So, where the shared drive comes down, I know you mentioned that you're going to put a gate up at the top.
Yes.
But if that's the, the neighbor's largest concern, you know, people being on that and getting over to his property, is there?
As Patrick said, and I said, there's a four-foot, like he said, there's a four-foot fence from the lake up to our property where people cannot cross.
On?
On, on the shared drive and then ours, right here.
Oh, okay, okay. Thank you.
There is a four-foot.
So, it's fenced off. I'm sorry. Yeah, please come up.
Sorry about that.
So, I know exactly what you're saying. The concrete that is shared 50/50 butts right up against his house. He can't put a fence there without disturbing the flow of the concrete. And one more thing, what she said, kind of throwing me under the bus that I'm not homesteaded there, that's even more concern for me, because I'm not there.
You're not there to see what happens.
I'm there after the parties to pick up the trash and stuff. I don't see what's going on.
It looks like there's a fence that's set on the applicant's side of the driveway from the back of the house down to the, to the lake frontage. Is that correct?
Say this, explain it again.
There's a fence that's set on the applicant's side of this concrete driveway that y'all share.
Mm-hmm.
That runs from the back of the house to the lake frontage.
On his side, yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, that, that fence line just kind of follows his house line all the way up, right, Delbert?
Yes. It goes all the way up to the house, and then, the house is the other fence that she was talking about.
Yeah, and Ms. Davis's concern was, is it open back there where people could freely walk over to your property?
There's a, that was where I was saying there was an eight-foot fence, an eight-foot gate there.
Yes, sir.
That will have a lock on it, and we will post signs on it that there's no trespassing. Also, if it will be stated in our contract that anybody caught over there should be arrested and charged with trespassing.
Okay.
You will be arrested and charged with trespassing. But that's his property, not mine.
Right.
I'm an old rancher. I do not believe in anybody trespassing.
Yes, sir, I understand.
Problem is, these Airbnb guys aren't old ranchers, you know? They don't live by that. Don't act, don't ask, you get invited. But, yeah, the fence he's talking about, just to clarify, if it is eight feet wide, it's only four feet tall, that's a wrought iron I'm talking about.
Okay.
All right.
Thanks, y'all.
All right. Anyone want to share their thoughts or make a motion?
Were you there? Yes, sir.
Again, I, I feel like these lake ones are always extremely challenging because of the circumstance, because of the fence heights and docks and equipment and all of those things. You know, I do, and I'm probably going to be the black sheep up here, but I completely understand the gentleman's concerns, looking at these photos, you know, having that fence coming down the applicant's side of the shared drive, I do think is helpful. You know, and again, you know, if that, if we can put some stipulations in there stating that, you know, the applicant is going to follow through on the no trespassing signs, et cetera, so there is some recourse, and that the neighbors have a local contact here, you know, I, I would say that I'm still okay with this being a short-term rental personally.
Is that a motion?
Yes, sorry. Looking back at my coffee right now.
And if you're making the motion, what are your stipulations?[1748.88]
So, and, I'm sorry, could you repeat those so I can jot my notes down? Yeah, so.
We will make very noticeable which house is ours by putting the numbers up, so they will not, hopefully will not, can't ever say what anyone will do. Not get into anybody else's drive. They will only be being used ours.
Yes, sir.
They're allowed only to be used, all parking will be inside of our fence, which we have an eight-foot solid fence, as y'all seen in the pictures.
Yes, sir.
Separating all of us. We will put a gate leading down from our property to, on the shared concrete, so that no one can pull boats or utilize that in any way. We'll put a lock on it. We will put a lock on the eight-foot gate down at the bottom, so that it cannot be utilized or opened, just opened and people going through it. They will actually have to jump a four-foot fence, and we will put no trespassing signs on the fence down at the, at the lake, and we can put one at the upper.
Okay. And this is just, again, brainstorming thought. I also feel like, you know, if you are using the sites like Airbnb and VRBO, you can send pre-check-in instructions to your guests.
Yes, we do.
So I would definitely include maybe your survey or some sort of aerial footage exing off that driveway, like this is an unpermitted area of the property. You know, just again, you're covering all your bases. I don't know what the legal abilities are for security systems with cameras, like, I don't, that's all on your short-term rental stuff, so I don't know that, but that might be another thing to consider. But I definitely, if this does pass, I would highly encourage you to include those documents in your pre-check-in, so people understand in the forefront.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, sir. All right, so you're making a motion?
Yes. Again, I, based on the discussion, it will make, making a motion to approve as presented with the following criteria: as far as distinct numbering on both sides of the entrance of the property, limiting parking to just inside the applicant's fence, having a gate added that leads down to the shared drive with a lock on it, also a lock of the eight-foot gate, the no trespassing signs in multiple locations, and I am going to add in that stipulation that the, some sort of photo or something needs to be on whatever site that you guys are utilizing when the applicant does book, as well as in the property specifically.
What, what kind of photo, I mean?
Just showing, like, what the property boundaries are and what is off limits. Just something that somebody can visually look at and say, "I cannot go there."
So, one concern on that is, I mean, part of these conditions are for code enforcement to be able to actually go enforce the conditions. I guess the concern with it being posted on some third-party site, I mean, I don't know if that's something we can verify or, or not, and if we are charged with going and looking at each posting he makes for each rental, I mean, that's gonna be difficult.
So, but we did say that we could add stipulations, so how would you like that, then?
I'm just, I'm not saying you can't do it. I'm saying there's a concern with enforcement if you do do that.
It'd be difficult to enforce.
Well, I think on enforcement, how I would see it is not every time, but when you have a complaint.
Yes.
You would go and see if that particular renter had gotten a paper worth.
Review the notice.
I mean, if there's a complaint, though, they don't get renewed.
Correct.
Exactly. I mean, that's, that's the other safe side about the short-term rental. It gets reviewed in a year. If there's complaints or stuff, it doesn't get renewed.
Right. I want to make sure that the opposition heard that. Did you guys hear that? So we don't, do a very good job of explaining that.
Yeah, you gotta come to the mic. We're.
I'm gonna open a public comment and let you come speak, please.
TV.
No, go ahead.
Patrick, again, so I'm just brainstorming while you guys are, got all this open discussion going on. If you do move forward, that gate need to say that he's willing to put in and lock, needs to say no access.
Right.
Not just no trespassing. But check this out. We've got two gates. The only way to get to that water, there's a medical emergency, how's an ambulance or something get into, get into the water?
No access unless emergency.
Yeah.
You're gonna have to walk up.
You're not worried about that? Okay.
I, okay. I mean, I don't know.
That's not a point.
They'll tear a fence down.
Okay.
I mean, I.
All right, but, okay.
I wouldn't.
But not for a vehicle.
So if you do move forward, I request more than just no trespassing, no access on the gate.
Okay.
On the vehicle gate that he's gonna put in on top of the hill. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay, if you wanna modify?
Okay, and we will add in not only the no trespassing signs in multiple locations, but also no access signs where applicable.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve with the conditions that Ms. Davis has outlined. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Five, one to approve.
I just don't like lake properties. Sorry.
All right, we're gonna take a very short, three-minute break and let those that need to go to the restroom. 11:05, and I'm gonna call the meeting to order again. The next case is PD 2306 and CP 2302, Coliseum Drive. It's a continuation of a discussion that we had last month. It's a request for an amendment to the Comprehensive Plan changing from neighborhood to neighborhood center and rezoning from RS1, RS2, and CGCH, commercial, heavy commercial, to planned development district, allowing RS1, RS2, and neighborhood commercial uses subject to certain conditions and limitations located along an approximately one block on either side of the 4,041,000 and 4,200 blocks of Coliseum Drive. Are you going to re-present the, the case, or?
Would you like me to?
Uh, I don't know that we need to.
Or give a abbreviated?
Abbreviate. That would be wonderful.
There are some people in the Coliseum area here, so I think, just so that they're in the loop, we need to.
Please.
Thank you.
Okay, and thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, this is a continuation from last month. And at the last meeting, I believe you asked, the, the board asked that we expand it down to where Coliseum takes off from Chadburn.
Yes, ma'am.
At that point, and so we took it down to 30, the 3,800, 3,900 area. With the new notices, we sent out 96. There were 65 in the original, so 31 were added. It was expanded out. And you can see by the green and red stars that we did get some feedback from the new area. We also got additional feedback, or the same feedback, from two of the property owners that had originally objected. This was the original one.
Yes, sorry, Sherri, can you go back?
Yes, ma'am. Maybe. I continuously have problems going back, so.
No, you're good. I, I did notice that there was 37 calls and personal visits, which is great. Thank you, thank you for that. It would be, not to add more work, but I would like to kind of know which ones they were. That would be very helpful, but that's okay. I'm not gonna make you do that.
Okay. I could put most of them in any additional information you would like me to send, but I don't have that with me right now. Okay?
Can you tell me if there were calls or visits made to you all? Right, to?
To us in the planning department, or when I was out in the field?
Gotcha, okay, perfect.
There were four, five people that actually came in and spoke to me personally.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
And the rationale, the reason that, I mean, general, the reason that we looked at this stemmed from the Monument request for a building permit, and a real look at the neighborhood and the fact that it is changing. It hasn't changed essentially for a number of years, and then over the past maybe 10 years, there have been changes that have occurred in there. Part of those changes we knew about, part we did not. It's just people making conversions on their own and not coming forward, particularly in the RS1 area. And so since you directed us to take a real close look at it, I've probably been out there five or six times, looked at it in depth, walked around the area, talked to some neighbors. So I have a much better feel, I think, for what is out there and where it might be headed. This, I've added these photos. This came from where you head off. The Stripes is right at that corner where Coliseum goes off. You'll also see that the Lakeview Laundromat is across the street from Stripes, and the other building, which is now a religious building, was originally a commercial building, is in that general area also. But on the bottom, which would be to the bottom right for you, behind the Stripes, where the zoning presently is CH, it's a heavy business, heavy truck business, they trailer in and out, and then they have kind of spread past that zoning into the single-family zoning. And they would be interested in keeping the CH zoning and expanding it. And, and I'll talk about that in just a moment. The one at the top on your right is the other corner where Odessa and 38th come in. And I particularly wanted to talk about that area for just a minute. That, that's the eastern side of that block, if you will. There are modest homes on that block that have been there for a long time, but they're all on large lots, significantly large lots. And in walking up that street and talking to the property owners, most of them are elderly. They've been there a number of years. They're concerned that they don't want to change now, but that they might want to change in the future, and they wanted to have that ability. And so they were concerned at how, how the direction was going to go, if they could stay residential until they wanted to change. And a couple of, a couple, as I was standing there talking, said, "We understand that if one of us goes, we're all gonna go, because if one of us changes, it'll change our neighborhood, and others will come to us and offer money, and we'll probably go."
Okay.
Okay, so now I can't go forward either. To the top or bottom? There.
Ah, there we go.
That helps. That was the one from the original.
Yes.
Okay. Very briefly, we expanded, looked into the area. It's already had some commercial incursion into that area. The property on the west side of Coliseum that was recently purchased was purchased to look at having duplexes or multifamily over there, and they would like, and that would be in keeping with what we had discussed in the past, but they are, we're definitely going to move into that area or look at the neighborhood commercial. Okay, whoops. So to remind you of the certain conditions and limitations that staff had recommended at the last meeting, and I underlined those areas that were part of the original, that were points that I think people raised questions about. And we were talking about a front setback along Coliseum will be 15 feet. We had originally recommended, both for any new residential or, and definitely for a commercial. I've added if requested for the residential. All parking would be encouraged to be in the rear of the building, so that you'd get that, that boulevard look along Coliseum as much as possible, and, and a lot of the people wanted to see that. Number two, for non-residential development or redevelopment, the front setback area will require a landscaping plan approved through the urban design review process prior to approval of a site plan or issuance of a building permit. What I'd like to emphasize is, we've always had non-resident, non-residential development or redevelopment would be the ones, not residential development. Three, any signage for non-residential uses must be attached to the building, and limited to 50 feet. Freestanding signage is not allowed. Within that area, if they all have the same requirements, it kind of balances it out with having an impact on the residential. Then use of existing homes for offices or commercial use is encouraged, and we still would like to see that flexibility occur. Number five, lighting for non-residential uses shall be shielded. In order to minimize spillover, the lighting has always been the biggest bone of contention and worry about any commercial going on. Number six, allowable neighborhood commercial uses are generally to be serviced and retail uses, and drive-through uses will not be allowed. They talked, the neighbors talked about whenever there's something going on at the Coliseum, they get a lot of foot traffic. They get a lot of people walking in the street. Those people are always looking for someplace to go, away from the Coliseum for a break, someplace to eat, that kind of thing. Number seven, sidewalks shall be required along both sides of Coliseum and 43rd for commercial development. I did add that this time, I, based on the discussion that occurred at the last meeting. Number eight, for purposes of this planned development, the Burke Monument Manufacturing Company is considered an artisan use and is considered a special allowed use within this district. And number nine, non-residential uses must be compatible in size, scale, and design with the existing residential uses and the desired character of the neighborhood. Site and building design must be approved through the urban design review process prior to approval of a site plan or building permit. The urban design review process is the only process we have that really gives us that ability to sit down with a developer, talk about what the concerns are, and work with what they propose to kind of find a balance in there to benefit both the neighborhood and what they want to do. And then staff recommendations. Staff recommends approval of the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, CP 2302, changing from neighborhood to neighborhood center, and approval of the rezoning from RS1, single-family residential to planned development district, allowing RS1, RS2, and neighborhood commercial uses, subject to certain conditions and limitations, located along the approximately one block on either side of the 38, 39, 4,000, 4,100, and 4,200 blocks along Coliseum Drive and along West 43rd Street, from Great Creek Road to Coliseum Drive, and along East 43rd from Coliseum to Odessa. And the real impact that probably would be fairly immediate, and I know the gentleman last time talked about the fact that there is a depression within that property that's west of Coliseum, because it was held water forever, but you're all aware that there is, you can bring dirt in, and you can bring the level up. That we've had people that have already indicated that they're looking at that property, commercial type of uses that would like to go in, and I think that is a, an area that will be open to some development, so we have people that are watching to see what the requirements are going to be. And with that, are there any questions that you might have?
Staff, have any questions? I don't think I have any at this point. I want to open it up for public comment. If you wish to speak, please state your name and address or single-member district.
Hello, my name is Cara Bowles. I'm actually here on behalf of my grandmother, Barbara Ward, who's sitting right behind me. She is at 3925 Columbia, and she also owns the lot right beside it, 3923 Columbia. It was originally my great-grandmother's property, and then they inherited and moved into the home after their mobile home was no longer habitable. From the map that she just showed, it looks like we were not on the original list for getting the notices, and so I appreciate you guys expanding that some. We came really to learn about what was going, what, what the change meant before we made an opinion, and so the first few topics that you guys have talked about with other areas have helped us educate ourselves as to what that could open up. And so I would. And so I would like to just add to the record that, because she has two lots, two letters, she is opposed to the change, mostly being because she is on Columbia. That butts up to, basically, I feel like more, it'd be more likely for someone to buy property along Coliseum Drive, right? So they're gonna put in the restaurant or the store, or something of that nature, which means that therefore, as she just suggested, the parking lot should be behind the building. So then now she has a parking lot butted up to her backyard. She mentioned too that a lot of people in this neighborhood are elderly. And so truthfully, I feel like it's opening up a very, what's the right word? Basically, people who are already could be subject to being taken advantage of, you're opening them up to more possibility with that by having more traffic coming through. And that's really her concern is, you know, there's already, it's already somewhat poverty-stricken in this area. What other traffic are we gonna be bringing in, and what other possible crime and things like that? You know, if she had the opportunity and could afford something else, she'd have moved a long time ago, but she can't. So it's up to us to be able to take care of this for her. I personally grew up on 42nd Street, right in front of the Coliseum, so I can attest to what this neighborhood is like. It's a lot of people that care about each other, but you're right, just having stuff at the Coliseum brings in a lot of people that sometimes are not people that you want around. We've had tons of stuff stolen back in the past, so I think that bringing more commercial into the area is only gonna increase foot traffic in the area and possibly more crime. So that's our concern. And so, yeah, that's it. Thank you. Should I give these letters over?
Yes, please. And thank you. All right. Anyone else wish to speak on this case?
I'm not, Carter. I own that property, I own 4,007 North Chaburn, 4,003, 4,015. And I'm not really, I'm late to the game on this. So, all the red, explain, what are we doing?
I think the intent is to try to, try to develop a plan for the improvement in this area. There's a mix of commercial and residential along Coliseum Drive. We've got the monument business that we've discussed that pulled a permit to expand their Coliseum is a major thoroughfare into the, into the, into the fairgrounds, into the Coliseum area. And so I think the idea was to try to identify a way to control the development or redevelopment of that area in such a way that the neighborhood still maintains its character. Those that want to continue to reside in homes can do so in a relatively peaceful manner with limited disruption, but to also allow for commercial development along Coliseum because it's a thoroughfare that already has commercial businesses. But to provide some measure of control to prohibit someone from coming in and acquiring, you know, half a dozen lots and putting a strip center along that stretch, you know, as an example. I think that's the intent, was to try to provide some measure of control over the redevelopment of this area as a means to preserve its character.
So, I mean, someone has to come in and buy, buy all the land from the people.
Well, I, I think under the scenario that the city is considering, it would be, someone might buy a tract that has a home on it and want to put a small business in that, in that home that fronts on Coliseum. Or someone wants to buy a home in this area, and you would be allowed to, I don't think there are any restrictions with homes, really, terms of development. So the residential nature really remains.
But it'll all be, is this all commercial? I mean, excuse me for my ignorance.
No, no.
Is it gonna be commercial now that the Coliseum's possibly gonna expand, and now all the railroads over here, we coming down this way?
It's a mixture, and...
And I think that, I think the zoning change would allow for commercial development with restrictions on the type of development and what it looks like and how big it is, so as to maintain the scale to be consistent with the neighborhood.
Well, with us having all this elaborate, beautiful photo, do we have a master plan of the exit roads to get out of here? And the reason I say that is, 10 years ago, my property, which is not affected here, it's across the street, I own all the land next to the Cowboy Church on Bag.
Yes, sir.
I had a plan there, and I had a master plan that, oh, I couldn't do this because we putting in an exit road for traffic to leave the Coliseum.
Oh, I'm not aware of that.
Which, right, which never happened.
There was...
Now, the plan has moved, which is, it's not available for anyone to know, but a guy like me, I lose. I lose thousands of dollars because of all this stuff.
Okay.
And now, how's the traffic? You gonna put more business in? I've got, I've got a whole corner lot that's totally shut down for traffic. They come out, put barriers up, oh, that's it, Coliseum, too bad. You shut down. So I cannot, now they're telling me on my commercial property, I can't do anything because of traffic.
What, can you be specific about which property you're talking about? And is, are the barricades, when there are events at the Coliseum?
It's right there on the corner of Chaburn and Grape Creek Road.
So the north?
For the last 15 years, there was a master plan that was gonna reroute, yeah, that's gonna reroute the road. And when I owned all that other land behind me, I had to sell it, and the road never did come. Now they're gonna move it up above the Cowboy Church, I never heard nothing about it.
Well, I can partly answer that. There is a, in our thoroughfare plan, it shows Grape Creek Road continuing across Chadburn and then back to the west for traffic reasons, but there was never a plan for the city to build that. As that property develops, the developer, property owner will be responsible for constructing that.
So what happens is, they're right here where you here 10 years ago, and I was, and will you be here 10 years from now?
Your concern about the thoroughfare plan and the impact on your property is legitimate, and I think it's something that we might want to discuss and address separately from the rezoning of this neighborhood, because I don't think that, and correct me if you guys feel differently, but I don't, I don't understand how that would impact, how this zoning or change in this area would impact your lot, in terms of access.
More commercial business.
Okay.
More traffic, right?
Okay.
You're, I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I understood you to say that part of your concern is that the barricades prevent your, your business from being accessed.
No, no, I'm really just making a point.
Okay.
And I hadn't heard anyone saying anything about the traffic in the points, okay?
Okay.
So if we are going to do all this, there's another deal that stops about, I don't know, I think it's 32nd Street, funds that's available to help develop Northside, that's not being used.
Is that the tiers?
But it only stops up here. If we're gonna do all this, how come we can't extend? It hasn't helped the people if we really going to get serious with the Coliseum and all this?
I'm assuming that is the tiers program. It does end farther south from here.
29th Street?
Yeah, it ends about the Walmart, and generally that area.
Walmart gets it, that's 29th. Can't gets it. How come we don't get it?
Well, not to get too in-depth in the tiers, but City Council has looked at expanding the tiers a couple of times in the past eight or 10 years, and there are, there are issues with that. But the short answer is, they've chosen not to expand at this point.
Part of the challenge, and what we're trying to do and address here, is you have a mixture in the, we don't have that overall plan where it shows what's general commercial and neighborhood.
I've, I've got it.
And, and we have a mixture of it, and we have commercial that's in residential and residential that's in commercial. And what we want to try to do is preserve the residential so that it doesn't get overtaken. Because it has in areas, because it has been neglected and stuff, I mean, not that the monument place is overwhelming, but that's a commercial property that's in the middle of residential, it shouldn't be there. So they, that's what stemmed all this, was coming before us. We didn't want to approve it because it's, it's commercial in the middle of residential.
And the other point that's legitimate is that there were a lot of folks in this area that were supportive of the monument business and its expansion, which is legitimate. They've been there since the 1960s, I think. And all they want to do is add 1,000 feet to their building, and they're having to come before us to get their property rezoned. The neighborhood clearly supported that business, and I think the other businesses that are located along Coliseum. And so the idea was to try to develop zoning that allowed the organic redevelopment of this area to continue and try to, try to keep out someone from coming in and acquiring large chunks of land and doing massive redevelopment of this area, and potentially driving folks that are, that have been in those homes for decades, out of their homes into other, other parts of the community because of the redevelopment efforts. I don't think, I don't think the folks in that neighborhood want to see that, and I don't think we want to see that. And so that's, that was the intent of this rezoning idea to begin with, was to try to preserve the character of the neighborhood.
Well, I'm all for it.
Okay.
I mean, I'm all for growth, but I'm also for fair is fair. We've got all this money sitting in tiers. We want to get to the Coliseum, we need to, if we really serious, really get involved in that and say, hey, come on, guys.
Yep.
What's, what's the status on the Coliseum?
Yes, sir.
I don't want to change the subject. Are we going to rebuild the Coliseum?
Yes, sir.
Are we?
I think there's plans to redevelop the Coliseum and improve it, yes.
And so that's gonna be double the size?
I don't know if it's gonna double the size. It's gonna add suites or luxury seating that is not there today, and improve it, improve the overall facility.
Right, improve everything, yes.
As a means to attract more business.
Right. So that's all I had. I mean, I'm, I'm all for it, but...
Yes, sir. Thank you.
My name's Dolores Sabata, and we live right behind the Stripes, 3929 Coliseum Drive. My thing is the safety, and as far as like the transients, I hate to say that, but I'm not judging. It's just that we have a lot of people that, like, we live like directly right behind the Stripes, and they have like a park where, like, the trailers park.
Yes.
And then, but we have other people come and stay there as well, you know? And they could stay there for weeks at a time. And you're saying that we're gonna develop, and you're gonna bring businesses and all this other stuff, but when you do that, you also bring a lot of people that, you know, that aren't, how do I put it? I don't want to sound rude.
I understand what you're saying.
But, you know, people that don't belong, and transients that are just gonna kind of, you know, be there. Do y'all have plans on safety as far as like upgrading, like, the police in that area? Because it's already not a, it's not the best neighborhood, but it, you know?
Well, in terms of commercial development, if we went back through the, some of the detail, there are lighting requirements, there are parking requirements, there's fencing requirements. And all of those, I think, are measures to, number one, provide safety on the, on the site that's being developed, but also to, to limit or prohibit that development from encroaching on the neighbors. And so, I, I don't know, I don't know how to address your concern about transient traffic. I guess you could argue that more commercial development might encourage more transient traffic.
Yeah.
I think it, it could also do the opposite, because you're gonna have sidewalks, and if I owned a business there, then I would have more security cameras, I would be, so from one aspect of it, I think it'll eliminate it, because when you walk up and down that area, I mean, there's nothing there. But you start developing businesses, kind of what Travis was saying, when you start putting the parking in the back, giving them sidewalks, I think all of that will, and the lighting will definitely help eliminate some of those problems we have today.
The other thing I would say, in my experience, areas that are being redeveloped usually don't have the volume of transient activity that more blighted areas might have. And so, transients are usually attracted to areas that are isolated or secluded out of, out of public view. And if you're going through and making improvements to these properties, you're eliminating some of those options that might have been available for, for transients in the past.
Right. Okay. That's all I have. I just was curious about the safety and the, you know, I'm all for it, you know, but just as far as like, if you're building it up, are you also gonna bring in the safety as far as like the more police presence and whatnot?
Yes, ma'am.
I guess it's not a good look, but at the same time, it is a safety, you know?
And it's important.
Safety concern.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
There is a concern that was raised by Brittany in our discussions about this case. The, can you speak to the concern about mortgage lending?
Yes. Sure am. So, and I, please understand, I am all for development and growth in San Angelo, but just this past week, ran into this issue, and any time that we go in and try to change an existing neighborhood into something that it technically isn't yet, we do run into issues. So, the biggest concern that, that I'm posing is, you've got a lot of homes in that neighborhood that we're gonna be changing the overall zoning, and these are residential homes that people are still residing in. We've heard a lot of the neighborhood is elderly, and unfortunately, when their time comes, those homes come back up on the market, they're bought by investors, or they're bought by first-time homebuyers because they're at a more affordable price than what the rest of the market may be at, at that time. When that happens, and it is no longer considered an RS1 zoning, we run into issues with FHA and VA government insured loans, which are the typical buyers for this neighborhood. When that happens, we have to get with the city, get a grandfather letter showing that the home was residential before we went in and did all of this zone change. It causes delays in the lending process, it creates issues with the buyer. Then that letter, you know, we're hoping that will be, it will still be good when that buyer goes to resell down the road, and the whole thing takes process, or time and, you know, and whatnot. The other issue would be, you know, for those people to maybe potentially have to replat. This, this situation just came up on a property that I wasn't even involved in the transaction. I just tried to step in and help down further on Chadburn on 32nd. Sherry assisted me with this. Back in 97, they went, the city came in and re-cleaned up Chadburn. Well, they went in not, a little further down 32nd. So they went in this first home and then half of the second home, which didn't make any sense, so the secondary, or the second home in on this block was both residential and commercial, okay? Well, they go to close the loan, they find out they cannot close the loan because, again, it was zoned differently than what the lending requirements are. The lending requirements on FHA and VA are that the home has to be insurable by the lender for 100% of the value. If it's commercial or any other zoning other than residential, it's only insurable for 50% of the loan value. Therefore, the buyer cannot get a loan. And again, all we can do is keep talking about affordable housing. This neighborhood is the affordable housing. So I am, that, that's my biggest concern due to the fact that I literally just dealt with this. And Cara is actually a lender here in town, and she can probably explain that a little bit better than I did.
Well, and if I could, before she comes up, sorry, if I could answer some of that. We, we deal with that probably on a weekly basis, maybe not weekly, but monthly basis, we have issues like that. I have never seen one in a case like we're proposing because the underlying zoning of this property would be RS1. We're proposing a planned development... zoning of this property would be RS1. We're proposing a planned development that would be RS1 zoning with some additional uses allowed. So typically, when we see this problem, it's a property we had one zoned industrial, but it's got a home on it, or it's zoned general commercial.
So it's got a legal non-conforming use.
Yes, whereas in this case, it would be conforming.
Conforming zoning, yes.
And so, again, I may be wrong. There may be situations I'm not aware of, but I have never, in my experience, seen a situation where they've had a mortgage problem with a situation like this where there's a planned development that does have that RS1 zoning as its base zoning.
Okay.
Kara, thank you.
So Brittany actually explained it perfectly, but I was just going to add to that. Aside from whenever we get the city approval letter saying that it is legal non-conforming use, or like he just said, maybe it's legal conforming use, the appraiser still has to comment the marketability of the property and if it's basically conforms with the market and can be resold as is needed for the lender. So where if we were to foreclose on the property, can we still resell this as a single-family residence at value? And so that could be a flip side of the concern, is it still going to hold its homestead value for, to be a residential property as businesses are built around it? Or is it no longer appealing and marketable for that nature? So that's where you're going to run into some more lending concerns on that side. And so, and then just as people were talking, I think that maybe there is some misunderstanding as far as what the zoning is proposed to be. Because my understanding with what was talked about previously was that by changing the neighborhood that basically it's, anyone could come in, so to speak, business-wise, small business-wise, so neighborhood commercial. Is that, am I wrong on that side of it?
Well, I wouldn't say you're wrong. It's, the way it's proposed, it's a planned development, which is like a customized zoning district specifically for this property or this area. But the base, any planned development has a base zoning, meaning regardless of anything else, the rules in that zoning apply, which in this case would be RS1, single-family. But then there would be listed some additional things that are also allowed, which would include
RS2.
The, well, RS2 and neighborhood commercial uses, but with some stipulations. So we would consider an RS1, single-family use on that property completely legal, no question, from the city's standpoint.
Right. So then somebody wanting to do the RS2 or the commercial side of it, do they have to get approval per each property before they can implement that restaurant?
Yes, they'd have to submit additional information and maybe go before a review board to look at, if it's commercial, to look at landscaping or lighting, to make sure that the site development is consistent with the surrounding area.
Okay.
And to prohibit someone from coming in and buying four lots and putting up an inline retail building in the middle of the block.
Okay.
But also to be clear, none of those additional requirements would apply for anybody who wanted to continue using it as a single-family.
Right, right. Well, I am definitely new to any of this side of stuff, so thank you for your patience on that. But I think my last like thought as we were just discussing all this is if it is a situation where they're having to get approval before they are converting that house to a restaurant, does it necessarily need to be a zoning change? Or can it just be a case-by-case situation where the same situation is taking place, where the neighborhood is addressed and, you know, more of a vote type situation to make sure that it is, that you guys are still holding power over what's coming into that? And, you know, I don't know the answer to that. Y'all would know more than I would.
If I understand the question, the, it would not require a zoning. It would just be allowed, but there would be a process, but it would be an administrative process that staff would review and approve. So it wouldn't come to the commission, for example, for a vote.
You wouldn't have to rezone the property. In today's scenario, if you had a house on Coliseum that you wanted to put a business in, you'd have to rezone the property. And it would have to come before us, and we'd have to debate and discuss and potentially approve it. Under this scenario, it would be allowed, but they would work with the staff to make sure that the development, whatever it is for the business, is consistent within the neighborhood.
Okay.
So as to not impede on the residential homes around it.
Right. No, I understand that. I think that that's the only like underlying concern there is then just the people still having the voice in it, you know, if it's going to the city at that point and their intentions, not that it is, but it could be to development that area for the Coliseum, you know, for more income. So it's taking the people's voices out of it a little bit by taking away the planning, the planning board and being able to come and talk about it to discuss for sure that the neighborhood wants that particular business or something in the area. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I would add
All right, I'm going to close public comment.
Really, to me, what it comes down to is what you all and we as the city envision for this area. And there's kind of three options we're looking at. One is, let's say this is a residential area and should retain its residential character, and we can just say, no, we're not going to rezone anything to commercial in the future. Let's keep it residential. We've done that in many neighborhoods.
Yes.
And we don't rezone to commercial. The other option would be just say, like we have some neighborhoods, this is going to be commercial. In some areas, we have manufacturing zoning. So it's going to be manufacturing someday. And the idea is to, over time, force those residences out and convert to commercial or whatever. And then what we're trying to come up with is a middle ground where we're not saying you can't do any commercial, but we're also not saying the residences should go away and it should all become commercial. But that middle ground creates this sort of gray area where it's more difficult. But we think, our recommendation is, this is better than taking commercials, rezonings on a case-by-case, one lot at a time, partly because then you would have no ability to limit.
Right.
You wouldn't be able to say no strip center, for example.
Straight rezoning.
It's just straight rezoning. It's up or down vote, yes or no.
Yep. Okay. Anyone else want to share thoughts or make a motion? We could, I'm assuming we could continue this if we need to address the concerns about lending under this zoning classification, if that's, if that's something that we need to address.
We don't have the map that we had from last month, do we, available, that you had exactly which properties were affected, like that were actually going to be in the rezone?
Yes. Let's go back to the map and I'll show.
Do everything in red.
The, those in the blue were just those that had to be notified. The ones in the red over to Odessa and the red on the other side are the ones that would be affected.
But now we're there, 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 there.
Okay, that was the, and the same thing applies. The red would be affected, the blue would not.
But if I understand the, because it's got the RS1 underlining, the lending would not be an issue because this would be, I mean, so basically that would be off the table. And we would not have a lending issue, quote unquote, you know, there's always things that come up, but.
Yeah, again, it's going to go back to the underwriter because again, it's, those are going to be government insured loans based on the area that they are being sold in. So with that being said, you know, again, it's more steps, it's more a process for the city. It's putting more on you, it's putting more on us to be able to get those grandfathered letters. I mean, I don't know when that letter started, but it took us two weeks to get to where we needed to be. And that's time that a lot of people don't have.
In this case, they would not need the letter. Historically, in talking to other cities, Austin, San Antonio, that have done very similar things or exactly this, they've not had a problem because it's the underlying zoning itself that basically is staying the same.
Okay. I mean, that's my biggest concern. And I understand some of the neighbors' issues with safety, you know, bringing in more people in an elderly neighborhood.
If that remains your concern, would you like to continue this to the next meeting and see if we can get some lenders that have?
Candy, do you have any say in this? Like, have you run into this issue lately?
We certainly don't want to create a circumstance where it's, you can't obtain the financing that we, you know, VA or
It's a legitimate concern because FHA and VA are very
Absolutely.
particular in their underwriting process, so.
And I mean, I hate to keep tabling stuff. I really, really do because I know that postpones everyone.
This is a big decision.
But this is a big one. And, you know, if we're okay with it, I would like to inquire with multiple lenders that deal with FHA. And I don't know if some of the government programs or like T-Shack and stuff, I don't know if those are impacted. Like, I just think that when we go to make a large change like this, just like we did with the CBD downtown, we just need to make sure every I is dotted, every T is crossed before we blanket a neighborhood and change it. So I vote to table, please.
All right, we have a motion to table.
Second.
And a second. All in favor of tabling to the October meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
So five, one, to continue to next month.
Will we still add, um, until that?
Not, no. We voted to continue it to the next month.
Will we get a letter for that? So, yes, okay.
You tell us. The statute does not require us to re-notify when it's been tabled to a specific date. The idea being people who were here or aware of the meeting or can watch it on YouTube and read the minutes would know that it's being postponed to that specific date. This is a very large area, a fair amount of work and expense to send those notices out. If you direct us or ask us to do that, we would look at that. But the normal answer is when you table it, it does not get new notices.
It's up to you guys. This is the second time that we've heard this?
I mean, yeah. People that have come in and talked and called, I mean, it sounds like Sherry's done a lot of work, so.
And we got another month.
And I would also add that it seems the concern is more related to the question of lending and mortgages, not so much, I mean, I think we've heard the concerns of the neighbors that have been expressed.
I'd also like to see the map that shows what's GC, what's residential.
Okay.
On the next one. Just so we can look at where the
Current zoning.
Correct. Where it overlaps and doesn't.
The GC kind of comes down there.
Yeah.
That was helpful last time, yeah.
The chair's money expanded.
We don't, we are not in charge, we're not in charge of that.
I wish we had the authority to do that. Okay.
All together, all city government.
All right, the next case is PD 9707, a request to amend the master plan and concept plan for PD 9707 by adding a 14,500 square foot building for the Angelo State University Flight Training Program at the San Angelo Airport. Mr. Self is going to step out for this one.
You got carried away there. Okay. What is proposed is an addition to the, or an amendment to the airport master plan. They are proposing a lot 300 by 450 square feet or 137,700 square feet approximately, on which will be built a 14,500 square foot building, which contains classroom, flight simulators, offices, assembly space. It is an education, educational facility and the parking that's associated and needed with that. It meets the first-listed goal of the revised 2020 master plan, which was a better relationship with ASU and educational facility development. And so what they are proposing to do, as I indicated, is to train students to become commercial pilots is the ultimate intent. The item on the, that we were most concerned about and which they're addressing in the development is drainage on this site because this site is, has been, had drainage problems in the past and is fairly low. This is the airport master plan. The facility that we're talking about is going to be on Hanger Road, which is down here. That's the main road where the public services are. And that's not in the secure area, it's out of that area. And this is the facility and the parking that is associated with that. And staff is recommending approval of the amendment to the airport master plan, as approved the original in PD 9707, and then amended again in 2020, and to modify the plan to provide for the training and educational facility and parking lot for the Angelo State University Training Facility at 8450 Hanger Road. And with that, is there any questions that you might have?
Has the airport board heard this case?
Oh, yes.
And they support it?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. Just wanted to verify that. Okay. Any other questions for the staff? I'm going to open it up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this case, please step forward. State your name and address or single member district.
Good morning. Brooks Wainer with KFW Architects. I'm the architect on this project for ASU and the Texas Tech University system. And really, just wanted to see if you guys have any questions. I think Sherry went through it pretty well. We are working with, our civil engineer is working with the city engineering department to address the drainage issues. There will be a, either, I can never remember, it's either detention or retention. There will be a stormwater
Pond.
Detention pond that will regulate the flow of water. We're actually just north of a large drainage culvert that's currently taking all of the stuff off the runway and moving it to the west. And so we're going to kind of, the plan right now is to piggyback onto that. We'll have a separate, a separate space that will collect water from our site that's going to be sized for any possible future development as well. So it'll be sized appropriately, and then it will then meter the water flow into the adjacent culvert.
Yep.
Other than that, really, if you guys just have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions for Mr. Wainer?
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Anyone else wish to speak on this case? All right, I'm going to close public comment and take a motion.
Make a motion to approve as presented.
I second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Five, zero. Conditional uses, case one, CU 2341, a request for conditional use for a short-term rental located at 2274 Joy Road in the RS1 zoning district.
Still morning, right? Good morning? Okay, just making sure. 2274 Joy Road. It is a short-term rental request through a conditional use in RS1 zoning. This is the second one out at the lake to talk about today. As you can see from this picture here, that is the structure there, the white structure, the propane tank. And there, and you can see they do not have any paved parking. So that's going to be one of our conditions that they're going to have to pave and maintain the parking as a condition. Again, that map that shows where we're at, this is down here, right off of Mary Lee, Mary E. Lee Park is in the front. There's a little strip of Joy Road there. I want to say around 20, maybe 25 houses. Maybe that's more houses than I think that's really there. This is trying to show the property adjacent. And I'm going to see if it will, let me zoom in here just a little bit. So here's the subject property right here. You can see, just barely faintly see that their front property line here, almost similar. So from this front property line to their end of their back patio is approximately 100 feet between those pins on the subject property. The adjacent property, I'm going to say to the right and to maybe the north, if you will. Again, pin at the property line, and you see the beginning of their house structure, that's about 125 feet from the property line. This, I'll go to the next map, but I've also got kind of red dot here and a red dot here. These two are opposed. This one down here is opposed, this one was for. But you can really see why this one might be opposed, is their backyard is part of their front yard, if you will.
Yes.
So that's why I bring that up on this image here. While we do think there's a couple of conditions like parking here and paving this parking at the front, this could be one one, again, y'all have the discretionary decision on whether this makes sense or not. There is not one within 500 feet. We think that they do meet most of our other, well, they meet all of our other items for conditional use as of presented. Again, here's that kind of cleaner map that shows which ones are opposed. Again, you can see the two properties adjacent to the red outline property. You see one further down. You do see that this is kind of a cul-de-sac neighborhood, so you do have to kind of go down with that little roundabout and come back. Now, this is at the very front of the neighborhood, so you've got some give and take there. So they're not having to drive all the way to the end, where in theory, you know, somewhere down the road, someone down at the end might come forward and say, well, I want a short-term rental. And so those are things you have to kind of balance back and forth. So we do think that it meets our current ordinance except for paving and maintaining the two off-street parking. Again, they would have to go through and get the change of occupancy through building permits. That's where building permits looks at that floor plan, as well as the fire prevention team. That's where they also look at that addressing, where we talked about in that other project. They make sure that the addresses is seen from the property for the emergency staff. They also evaluate it, can they get there, can they respond to an emergency. They do have to keep that up. That's not just a one-time thing. After one year, they come back before you for the conditional use. Have there been any complaints, any issues that we need to raise concerns about? As well as, did they see any issues on their inspections?
Is there, sorry, can you go back?
Far away.
Fence, like between where those property, like?
If there is, I don't think it's a substantial fence. I'm not sure that the applicant is here today, but I do know there are some citizens that live in the area, and they may have a better idea that came to speak on this property. But I don't think, if there is, I don't remember it being a solid fence. I want to
Got it. Probably chain link, yeah. Age of the home.
And when you say pave, what are the requirements for paving? Is that asphalt or concrete?
Correct. That's what we'd require, is to have two asphalt or concrete paved spaces there.
Do they have to have a drive that's paved to those spaces?
Since it's not paved currently, yes. They'd have to have a paved connection to the road.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that just a hard surface though?
Crush granite?
Not in this scenario. Since it's not got the current paving right now, it would have to be a paved, what we would call an asphalt or concrete surface from, although it's not right of way at city property, it's an access easement from their property line to the road edge. And I think there's a chain link fence there, but it's hard to tell if there's a privacy. I just don't remember if
Okay.
Somebody might have some more information on that.
Thank you, Erin.
Okay.
All right, we're going to open it up for public comment.
I'm Jerry Lancaster again, and this is my wife, Loretta. And we own the home at 2250 Joy Road. We've owned that home for nine years. And I will say, the parking for that home is horrible. There is, there's no fencing on either side that I remember. It is strictly grass and a little bit of gravel and a narrow driveway to get through there. At most, there would be no parking for more than two cars. And otherwise, you'd have to park on the street and probably have to park on the city park across the street is where anybody would wind up being. To get there, you can come down Fisherman's Road to Joy Road, but the faster way is to take picnic straight down to Joy Road, which dead ends almost on our property. And we would, if anybody had been drinking, that's when would have problems.
Yep.
But Loretta and I are strongly opposed to the granting of the request for approval of a short-term rental condition at 2274 Joy Road. Joy Road is a very quiet, family-oriented residential street with very little traffic noise and no homes on the street that engage in loud partying and excessive drinking. To have a home on our street converted to a short-term rental unit would instantly change the complexion of this quiet, peaceful neighborhood. With the great possibility of allowed drink and party multiple nights of the week, and with no owner on-site to control the people using the home on any given night. Short-term rental units should not be allowed on residential streets unless the owner-operator assures you that they will be living in the home at all times, that they assure you that no one will be allowed to rent a home, a room, or be there unless they are present, and will be responsible for any extra loud music and the usual noise and activities that go along with short-term rental units. We have a quiet, wonderful neighborhood with good Christian people that do, that do not throw parties on a nightly or weekly basis. A short-term rental unit would drastically change this neighborhood and would lower our property values, as well as the peacefulness of the neighborhood. I urge you to deny the application. We started coming to Lake Nazareth in camping in RV, and in 1969, we camped out in RV until we purchased our first home in 1985 for 10 years on Shady Point Circle. We sold it in 95 in RV until we purchased our current home on Joy Road in 2014. We have owned this home for nine years and plan to live there full-time within the next year or so. The only reason we are not living there now is because my 96-year-old mother in Midland has advanced Alzheimer's. We bring her, we try to bring her with her anytime we're at the home, and a short-term rental unit just a few houses from our home would make it impossible for her to tolerate being here because of the noise that would almost certainly take place, probably several days a week, and most certainly on weekends. This would make it almost impossible for her to spend time of her last days here at the lake. We absolutely love San Angelo. I think Lake Nazareth is a wonderful asset to the city. If you begin approving these short-term rentals, I think it will decrease the value to anyone planning to live or spend leisure time at the lake. Can I ask some questions?
And we'd like to know if it is approved. Do the owners have local people to oversee the renters, to handle complaints? And how do we get a hold of them if we have a problem? And we'd like to see the rental contract and of the rules.
The, I do want to touch on something, and I believe Mr. Urick, who's not here today, brought this up several months ago. Yeah, within the ordinance that was adopted for short-term rentals, there was a requirement that the applicants provide local contact information to the neighbors. And I don't know, I don't know where we are in that process, if that's a requirement for short-term rentals, or what the, what's been adopted in terms of policy for dealing with that?
So, yes, on our public notice that we mail out, we should be listing the property owner if they are, actually reside within Tom Green County or the operator. They have that option under the ordinance, one of the two. And so we do list their name and phone number
Yes.
On there so that those within the 200 feet get that.
Yep.
I don't think there's any other location that that's posted, other than I know at the home, they have to list that information for the renters.
Right.
Yeah.
Do you have the owner contact?
Yes, we have been doing that, yes.
Are they shown to be, to be the legal owners? Because we, they have tried to sell that property a time or two and couldn't get
A clear title.
A clear title to it.
Through the appraisal district is the information that we have, and we, it does show an out-of-town owner and a local operator. And so that's who actually had signed the applications to apply. That's, we don't do a title search, obviously. We just go with what the appraisal district has for property ownership.
Because apparently, there's a problem on them getting a clear title in order to sell it, because it didn't sell. They have been able to keep it leased on a monthly lease agreement.
Yeah.
But I don't know what, for some reason, they decided not to. I think they forced the last leasers out.
Oh. So they, yeah. So if it's under 30 days, then they have to go through the short-term rental process. If it's longer than 30 days, then they can lease however they choose.
No, it was a continual lease prior to that, yeah.
What, you had, you had another concern that, or a question for?
She wanted to see the leases, which we don't have access to.
No, we don't have access to those, I'm sorry.
Okay.
But you should have the contact information for either the operator or the owner. And if you don't
If not, let me, I will get you my information, and we can connect, and I'll make sure that you get that.
Okay. We sent in our letter and decided to appear.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. And thank you for appearing.
Thank you.
Thank y'all. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this case?
It's under LLC.
Okay. Is the applicant here? Okay. I know I've said this before, but it is really hard for me to approve a short-term rental if the applicant's not here.
Especially with opposition.
Let me just address that, however. I think, I understand your concern, given the state of, and maybe Brandon wants to weigh in. I don't want to get too much into the legal side of things, but when we're disapproving a conditional use, you need to have a rational basis for that.
And I understand that, John.
And simply because somebody doesn't show up. I mean, if there are questions you have that you can't get answers to, that would be a legitimate reason. I would just encourage you to express those reasons beyond just they're not here, because that's not by itself sufficient.
Well, I want to clarify, part of the reason that I oppose short-term rentals without an applicant or an operator here is because of the impact that these properties have on the neighbors. And if you don't have the time or the convenience to at least notify this commission of why you can't be at this meeting when you're trying to get a special permit, then how in God's name could we expect them to respond to a neighbor that's got a problem with them?
Well, and especially since they're going to be making revenue off the property. So if you're willing to operate a business, but you're not willing to be present for a meeting, it doesn't look good on them by any means.
So, to me, it's important to see the commitment of the applicant to satisfying the demands and requirements of the neighbors that they may have, if there are legitimate concerns with the operation of this property. And for you to not send an applicant, or not send an operator, not show up as the applicant and the owner of the property that's receiving this benefit, to me, is a bad indication of what might be coming to the neighbors when we approve this, if we approve it, and there's a problem in that house, and there's no one there to answer the phone.
I agree.
Or to, or to answer the concerns that the neighbors have about that property. So, I don't, I don't like approving short-term rentals without the applicant's present. That's going to be my policy going forward. So, does anyone wish to make a motion or share their thoughts on this one?
I'm more or less concerned about the fence line. And Erin, thank you for putting the extra slide with the distance from the backyard or the one or the front yard or the other, because you can't obviously tell that from this photo.
It does, and you're right, it is a problem for the, for this property to be as far up close to the, to the driveway and the others set back as far as they are.
I just want to kind of second what Travis has said about the applicant, and more specifically, when there's opposition or questions. I mean, some of the things that these folks questioned, we can't answer. The applicant might have been able to, but we can't. And so it puts us kind of in a precarious place. So mine is more so like, when there's opposition, you almost have to have the applicant there to quell concerns. So I would make a motion to deny this request.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to deny. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed to the denial? So it's six zero to deny. All right.
In a bit.
Okay. I understand. CU 2342, a request for renewal of a conditional use for a short-term rental located at 1817 A&amp;M.
I'm going to say good afternoon, because I think it's afternoon now.
It is.
Ray Lionberry, planner. So this is a renewal of a short-term rental. It has been a year, except for they've only been operating for a month, because it took them a while to get the change of occupancy, some of the things they had to jump through. So they have only been operating for a month. It is a renewal in District 5, Karen Hesse-Smith in the ASU College Hills neighborhood. This is the neighborhood map, and as you can see, there are two other requests. I believe they went last month? Or are they going next month? The current requests?
No, Princeton is the one that's fixing to be heard.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
It's the yellow at the bottom.
But there were two denied. One has been approved, but hasn't received their CO yet. The one we are addressing is the green right in the middle. And we did, we did send out 20 notices. So, we did receive two in favor, and we actually received three in opposition Friday, late Friday. One of the oppositions wrote that letter that you are currently reading. The three in opposition that we received, two of them did not say anything. They were the same, there was an opposition the first round, that still, they have not said any reason why. The third one was in opposition last time, didn't say anything. Now they wrote the letter. They're, from the sound of the letter, it sounds more like they're not in favor of the junk car in the front than the STR.
I would say the piece of artwork car.
Correct. I'm sorry.
This letter, just to clarify, this letter shows that it's operating as a bed and breakfast, and not a short-term rental. Can you speak to that?
I'm not sure where that came into play, because it is a short-term rental.
I think many people in the community use the term bed and breakfast, just in general.
Yes.
And I see the car. Is that, is that compliant with the
According to code, it is. I checked with code and police. There has been no complaints, except code received a complaint about a junk car, and it was found to be art.
Got it.
And not considered junk.
Okay.
Okay, I have a question. So this is, are One that we have seen come up for the renewal, but that has not actually been operating very long. Do we have any, I mean, because we have nothing to, really, a month isn't long enough to base anything off of.
No.
So I don't, maybe this is a Brandon question, like, do we have like any stipulations on reapproval? Like, since they've only operated a month out of the whole year?
No, I mean, I don't think the ordinance speaks to that.
Have there been any complaints, police reports?
Nope.
Code compliance, any issues?
Nope. The only complaint to code compliance was the junk car.
Okay.
What is the difference between a bed and breakfast and short-term?
Bed and breakfast, the owner occupies.
That or lives on the property.
Short-term rental, they do not.
So I am going to speak on behalf of the applicant as far as, they could not be here this morning, and they did not know about this opposition because it came in late Friday.
Okay.
So we had no way of notifying them that, hey, it came in, can you change your schedule? They had some other businesses to attend to.
Okay.
So I am going to let you know, they have been in contact with me the whole time.
Good.
And
Okay.
I do know that.
Does anyone else have questions for Ryan? I'm going to open it up for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on this case, please come forward, state your name, address, single member district. Okay, I'm going to close public comment.
I mean, it's
The renewal process, in my mind, is a little bit different.
Yeah.
And it doesn't appear that we have a lot of opposition, although there is some.
Right.
But it doesn't appear to be the opposition, as someone mentioned earlier. It's not, it doesn't appear to be opposition from how the property is being used. It's just, you know, have the same taste in art.
That car might be there. That car might be there regardless of what the use is.
No, same taste in artwork.
I'm sorry, the artwork, I'll clarify.
You know, with that being said, I mean, again, if they've been operating a month, and, I mean, we don't have much to base it off of, but I will make a motion to approve the renewal.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So six zero. 23, or CU 2345, a request for a conditional use for a short-term rental. 2512 Princeton, in the RS1 zoning district.
All right. 2512 Princeton, RS1 zoning, District 5, Karen Hesse-Smith, ASU College Hills. It is a request for a conditional use for a short-term rental. I handed out two oppositions that came in as late Friday, as Ray has mentioned that she'd received some as well. I have, and I do think I emailed them to Mr. Robinson, I'm not sure if he was able to get those or not. But the applicant is here today to speak on this case. So we go back to this map. You can see, in particular, on the map, these two. There was a distance issue to begin with. That distance issue was dealt with by the zoning board of adjustment. They first determined the distance could be varied, and then a case came back for a variance for that distance. And they did get approval at the last zoning board of adjustment for these two properties to be in close proximity, less than the 500 feet in our ordinance. Again, you just heard the one up there at the, on A&amp;M, and then you've seen the others that we've had.
Which property are we discussing?
We are discussing Princeton, right down here, just north of Baylor.
So the yellow star that you're on?
Yes, that is correct, I'm sorry.
And the blue star?
The blue star by roadway is 557 feet, by property line to property line is 322, I think. I've got a slide that tells me, but I think that's the numbers. But they received a variance from the zoning board of adjustment to allow that shorter distance.
What's the... Yeah, I didn't paint a variance, and what's the basis?
We may make a sidebar here to just kind of go through that.
Yeah.
We interpreted the ordinance to suggest that the 500 feet separation requirement was not variable. You could not seek a variance for that.
Right.
This applicant went to the zoning board of adjustment. We have a process where anyone can basically challenge the staff interpretation of the ordinance and say, no, you're not reading the ordinance correctly. In this case, they took that to the zoning board of adjustment, the zoning board of adjustment agreed and said, no, that is a standard that could be varied, just like sign height, or fence height, or setback, or any of those things that can be varied. This is also something that could be varied. So subsequent to that, the following meeting, they brought the case to the board, and they did approve the variance in this case. And I think Aaron's going to cover it, but I think part of the issue here is that it's... I could see a situation, I don't think we necessarily recommended approval of this particular variance, but, you know, let's say you were across a river, or, you know, there were railroad tracks between you and another house.
Sure, that would be a...
There could be a situation.
But what's the basis for granting this variance, besides it...
Well...
Besides their interpretation that they think it's a guideline instead of a rule?
And I think Aaron may be going to talk about this, but I can, I think that, in general, it's that, you know, it's not across the street, it's not even across the alley from the subject property. It's basically down the street, around the corner.
Right.
It's just because you measure straight line, property line to property line, that it's within 500 feet, but it's...
But there's no hardship of any kind, or special circumstance?
Well, so, I guess we have to be careful here, because you could make a determination that you don't believe this is an appropriate conditional use in this particular case, but it's not your role to question. I mean, the zoning board of adjustment found that there was a hardship and granted the variance, so that comes to you as a given, basically.
So, and I know this doesn't necessarily apply to this case, but everything that, like, the ones that we deny, or that y'all deny as staff, I'm like, is the ZBA just going to get bombarded by these now? I mean...
Well, I guess we haven't had that many of them, but I think the zoning board has seen another one already. I don't think we're going to be overrun by them, but...
Okay. I'm sorry, go ahead. Aaron, please proceed.
Okay.
Sorry for the side...
Yeah, that's okay. It is this yellow one, by the blue one. The blue one has not, still has not gotten their certificate of occupancy. They have not changed, and they are not actively acting as a short-term rental, however...
When did we approve it?
I believe it was in December.
In December?
Yeah, December. So they're coming up on their one-year anniversary, which they would have to come back.
Okay.
So, yeah. So we did send out 26 notices. We did get, those two that were opposed did come in, and those are your oppositions that you have in front of you. I did, was able to update this map. We did have one in favor that's directly behind. You can see that their property faces north. If you go down SMU, and if you're driving down SMU, you take a right, and it is that fourth house just above the logo, that is the other STR. Again, Frontier is kind of back there, back to the east, and then of course, directly east is ASU, or actually, SAISD property, and then ASU property. I did have a picture of that, just because you can see the road here, and then of course, that is the press box for San Angelo Stadium there, and you can see the higher lights and things like that. So, although you are just a little bit into this neighborhood, this is still kind of at the edge of the neighborhood. You do have lots of activities that probably lots of this neighborhood has gotten used to over the many years that San Angelo Stadium and baseball fields have been built in ASU. However, it is a short-term rental that's closer in proximity to other houses. Again, here's just that distance map. You can see property pins, you can see the lines and where it goes. I also did the underlying zoning, because this again is at the, kind of one of the entrances off of the ASU side, that properties are kind of in transition. There are a number of rental properties, by hearing from people that have called in. They didn't give a for or against. You see CGCH at the large Frontier building. That may not change anytime any soon. There is a little bit of RMI on there, and of course, you can see that those are smaller lots and bigger homes there, or bigger houses on a smaller lot, I should say, not really a bigger house. But it is RS1, and then it's RS1 going back to the west. So we did look at this. They do have the two off-street parking spaces, and so we are asking them to maintain those, go through the certificate of occupancy for the permits and inspections division, and then obtain that annual fire inspection. Again, they look at the floor plan and require those things, and then come back in one year. I do think if we have complaints, I think we'll hear them within the year for us to make some decisions after the year renewal. They are local property owners. They don't necessarily have a local operator as of yet, but they are local property owners and do own a few properties in town. And so we feel like they're working towards something that might be beneficial, but let you guys make those decisions after you hear from our applicants as well. Any questions for me? Any particulars?
Can you go back to the photographs?
Yes, sir.
Of the front of the built property?
Yes, this one?
Yes.
Yes.
So, it doesn't look like there's enough driveway for two spots.
It is, it's actually 40 feet from the front of the garage to the right-of-way, and so ours is nine by 18, and so 36 feet actually do fit in there. It'd be very tight, but they do fit.
All right. Okay, anyone have questions for the staff? I'm going to open it up for public comment. If you wish to speak on this case, please state your name and address or single member district.
Hi, this is Doug Robinson. We're the property owners.
Yes, sir.
And to clear some things off, what, the, we knew that there was a 500 variance. So we're not trying to go against the variance at all. So we came to the staff and we said, hey, we're looking at this property, which we had done on 14 other properties. Hey, because this is the first thing you have to do to find out whether it's available to go. They said, yes, it's available to go. We went and bought it 10 days later. 20 days later after that, after we'd already turned in our thing, they said, well, it's not approved because there actually is one. I said, no, there can't be one, because we just called not too long ago.
When did you buy the property?
The end of June.
June?
Yeah.
So we know, based on the staff's comments, that December...
Exactly.
Is when the other one was approved. Okay.
So, that's the reason we won the variance. So we're not trying to go against the variance, we're not going to come back for it. You know, so I just, well, I just wanted to make sure that wasn't clear with...
Thank you for clarifying.
This is the first time we even heard the ZBA could make that.
Right.
Like, so that, sorry, that was more or less our shock, like, wait, what?
So, and we did show up, not only because they're opposition, but we did show up, so. Make sure, okay?
Thank you. Make sure y'all know that. Thank you for that. All right, anyone else wish to speak on this case? I'm going to close public comment and take thoughts or a motion.
I've got thoughts on short-term rentals, but I'll wait until we are off the docket on this.
Okay.
Well, I know that this is a strange thing with ZBA being involved and making that change in the 500, but I don't believe that any member of the public, owner of a property who does due diligence, made their phone call, heard what should have been correct information from staff, should be penalized. And I think that was some of ZBA's thinking.
Yep.
And so unless someone has another thought, I would make a motion to approve.
I agree.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Six oh to approve. Discussion items, discussion of potential future changes to the subdivision ordinance to allow more preliminary plats and final plats to be approved administratively without review by the planning commission, per Texas House Bill 3699. Ms. Pool, thank you. I understand.
So this is the item we briefly discussed at the last meeting. Our intention is to bring back an ordinance to you next month, but we wanted to bring it up one more time to get any input, so that we're writing the ordinance in a way that matches any thoughts that you have. And so I'll go through this briefly, but as we mentioned last time, state law does now allow most plats to be approved administratively. The exceptions to that are certain residential replats that require a public hearing and for any plat for which a variance is required. So, what staff would, will be recommending, depending on your input, is basically to amend our subdivision ordinance to allow those plats that meet the statute to be approved administratively. So the question for you all is, other than the statutory exceptions that require them to come to you anyway, are there other types of plats that you would prefer to see? One example, I think, that came up was maybe a large, you know, a big annexation area where they're proposing, you know, 200 residential lots, that you might want to see that preliminary plat for that, to see how a whole area is laid out. But then perhaps staff could approve the individual plats, as long as they conform to that preliminary plat. We could approve those administratively, or other... I guess we're looking for your concerns, what type of plats you would want to see each month. And let me remind you, though, that any of these could be appealed to you all. If the staff does not approve a plat, they would come to you from the applicant. So, it would, in other words, it would take staff and the applicant agreeing. Otherwise, they would come to you from the applicant anyway. So it's not like you're taking the commission out of the loop altogether.
So at that point, if it was denied, you would advise them or let them know that they can't come to us?
Absolutely, and I'm sure, I mean, 90% of our plats come from two local firms, and so we've, you know, we've already talked, this has gone to the development task force for discussion. There were really no concerns. Our local engineer surveyors had no concerns about this either.
They're not even going to be on the consent agenda?
Not if we do it as proposed, that's correct.
Okay. And what does the state law require? You said there's a legislative bill that's...
Yeah, so...
...allowed these changes, so what does the law require?
So, the change would allow, and it actually says, the governing body of the municipality or the municipal planning commission may delegate to one or more officers or employees of the municipality, or of a utility owned or operated by the municipality, the ability to approve, approve with conditions, or disapprove a plat. So, I read that saying either you guys or city council could delegate a city officer to do that. Now, before, and I think I sent y'all some information on this, the types of plats that used to be able to be administratively approved was what they called amending plats, and I think those were mainly to correct errors in the plats. And then there was also one where if it was owned by a nonprofit that assists at-risk kids. But otherwise, and certain minor plats or replats, and I don't know what constitutes a minor plat.
That's typically less than four lots, don't require any dedication of streets or anything like that. So those, we do some of those, maybe one or two a month, I don't know, does that sound right? That are already approved administratively, that don't come to you.
I'm not opposed to having you guys approve plats administratively, but I don't know that I'm in a position, sitting here right now, to tell you what exceptions I would feel comfortable with you guys bringing before us that we'd want to see. You guys have any thoughts on this, or...
Again, our recommendation is to not add any additional exceptions beyond what the state law would already require to come to you, but again, our goal is to bring the actual ordinance next month. So if you weren't on the same page as the staff, we just wanted to know that. So as we draft that ordinance, we'll know what changes to include. And obviously, you can make more changes next month when we bring it.
Yeah, and I think your point about larger preliminary plats is legitimate. I do think, and the case in South San Angelo is a great example of, I think, a case that we'd like to debate and discuss before it's approved. But after the preliminary plats approved, if the final plats, if they're, you know, final plating chunks of the preliminary plat, and it falls in line with what's proposed in the preliminary plat, I don't see any reason for us to have to approve that. So, yeah, that would be a big thing for me.
Okay.
In terms of plating. Can you think of any other plating concerns? Flag lots? For plating flags? I'd like to, I mean, I...
I think one of the problems with, one of the problems with plats in general is that it is not a discretionary decision. It's asking, does it meet the ordinance standards? If it does, you're obligated to approve.
Okay.
And so, that's always been the tricky part with plats. I know we have some of the same concerns you do with flag lots. We brought an ordinance, proposed ordinance changes, gosh, it's probably been four or five years ago. That sort of got gummed up, and there was some opposition, and ended up getting tabled, and we haven't brought it back. We kind of hope to do that at some point.
Yeah, I just think there's inherent risk and concern with flag lots, if they're, more so than just a straight plat. That's why I mentioned it. But I understand your point about being fair and equitable, applying this evenly.
Sure.
So, can y'all think of anything else?
Just for clarification, is there a threshold at which, you know, I use the term large preliminary plat? Is that, you know, more than 20 lots? You know, is it 100 lots? You know, at what point is it, you know, big enough that you think it has an impact that you'd want to see it? that you'd want to see it?
Uh, I don't know. Five or, five or 10 acres? Five acres, 10 acres? 10 acres? 10 acres or more?
All right. So hopefully we'll have something drafted, that you can actually see some language next month.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you, John. Uh, I also have the Meridian North, request to annex, 15 acres. Is that where you're headed?
That's where I'm headed.
Okay.
Uh, this is a piece of property, uh, that Danny is, uh, proposing to annex. He has been working on the adjacent piece of property, and he did annex that into the city. The biggest concern we have here, there are two. Drainage is going to be an issue, but also the access here is fairly limited because, um, this area does not have a street that he can connect to. Um, over here, this also now does not have a street that, it's a drainage, uh, drainage pond in that area, and so there is not a street that he can connect to. So, so he is limited in his connectivity to going south and eventually to that being developed of which he is partly building on right now. But this is one of those areas where it's been squeezed and squeezed so much that we need to be diligent in the future about any additional annexations.
I'm having a hard time visually marrying the, the survey with the aerial. Can you help orient us a little bit, please?
I hope so, and, uh, please correct me if I'm wrong, John. Pardon, oh, yeah. Okay. What we're talking about, Danny wants to annex this piece of property?
No, it's north of that. You can see where Royal Oak Drive on the plat, that is that T intersection there at the top of that aerial. So this is actually going to be going north, up to the back of the Redder Royal.
Nope. Okay.
So Royal Oak here-
Where the street actually is?
Top here.
Yes, it is.
Oh, so it's on this side.
Okay, okay.
Got it.
Right. I'm sorry. I guess what I was wanting to show on that one is the fact that this whole area has a, a future access issue, uh, because a number of streets have not been or are not going to be completed.
Is the fire marshal of any concerns on development?
They will, they will be reviewing it.
There, there is a maximum, the, the fire code has a maximum number of-
Street length.
Well, maximum number of homes that can only be accessed with one way in and one way out. Um, and so, we saw this on Twin Mountain.
Yep.
Um, once they hit that number of homes, they won't be able to develop any more until an additional roadway is connected through one way or the other.
Uh, so, is there anything that we need to provide input on, or?
Just making you aware, so that when the plat actually, um, as this goes through the process, you become aware of it, so it can discuss it.
Okay. Yeah, annexations are not required to come to the planning commission, but we bring them before we take them to council, just so you have a heads up.
And you'll be getting the zoning next month.
The zoning next month?
The next, the zoning.
Okay.
As well as the plat.
Yes.
This morning, he's going to provide the plat for this area.
Great. That would be very helpful.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask for backtracking, but on the future subdivision ordinance that we just discussed on, um, how many acres before approval, so it, that's, is that just for RS1, or does that apply to, for instance?
Everything.
Right, everything, like RS2 and all of that, because if it's, like, I'm not sure what the under roof amount is, for instance, Russell had mentioned when we were discussing Foster Road, um, per acre, 25 homes. Is that the same in RS1?
Well, no, the, the density for RS1 would be much less.
Considerably less.
But I guess the, the question is, i- is it only residential, big residential plats you'd want to see, or do you want to see them all, if they're commercial or industrial?
I think you'd want to see them all.
Yes. I mean, because again, like, if we're saying-
And I want to think about the land size, we may want to, 10 acres is just a-
Yeah.
A, a shot, I don't know if that, I'm going to think about, uh, what that really looks like in terms of development, and maybe we collectively discuss and decide that a smaller or bigger number is appropriate.
If that 10 acres ends up being RS2, it's 250 potential units. That's a lot. So I, I really think that we need to either scale back or put different approvals on, whether it's just RS1, RS2, commercial, that's my opinion, so.
Good point. Um, and you guys are going to bring a draft of the ordinance next month?
That's our goal, if we can get it all written and reviewed.
John, when you bring that, can you give us whatever the, like, again, RS1 per acre is this, because I apologize, I don't know that offhand, that was a new thing.
Density?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, that Russell mentioned today. And then I've got another question, before I get into my spiel.
Okay.
Um, one thing, John, you just mentioned was that on the fire marshal, they limit the number of homes with one way in, one way out. Just, that popped in my head, again reverting back to Foster, how does that impact that? Because technically Foster's one way in, one way out.
Yeah, I don't know how many homes are down there. It does, unfortunately, those are really big lots, so there's not a lot of density down there, but it's like 278 homes before you have to have a second way out, and they keep looking at that, and-
Okay. But when this other development, let's say, goes in, and they are, you know, let's say, however many we said, it could be up to 450 technically on the 10 acres.
It's going to push, it's going to push up on that number.
Right, which means we may have to create, require them to make that connection to Old Stone immediately, or something, to get back a different way.
Okay.
Uh, that, that's the challenge, is, then you've got to look at local roads. That's something we'd definitely look at. I, I will point out that the, um, the actual fire code, the international fire code limit on the number of homes with one way in and one way out is significantly less than that. Based on a request from the home builders a few years ago, probably 10 years ago, council adopted an amendment to that fire code to allow more homes with only one way in and one way out, to-
Is that based on, like, as far as distance from each other, like, for instance, Butler Farms are half acre, acre lots up, you know, smaller density?
None of us were here at the time that was debated.
Right, yeah.
It was controversial, and staff, including the fire department, recommended against that. They recommended going with the standard fire code, um, but just to throw that out, that it is, it does allow significantly more homes with only one way in and out than, than is typical in other cities.
Okay. Wow, interesting. Thanks.
Okay, public comment. Issues or concerns not on the regular agenda you'd raise about public at this time. Citizens should speak from the podium, address all comments to the dais, begin by stating their name and address and member district, limiting their remarks to no more, or to less than three minutes, to no more than three minutes. I'm going to open it up for public comment. Uh, does anyone, anyone wish to share their, have thoughts they want to share?
Um, obviously, I'm not part of the public, but I, I'm going to take this moment to just kind of discuss some things in general. And I know that you, y'all work so hard, and you have multitude of cases from all different levels coming at you at a given point in time. Um, over the course of the last month and a half, I have received 10 or more calls from citizens, um, in regards to lack of communication across the board. Um, they're sending emails, they're leaving voicemails, and nothing is getting returned. Um, again, I know it's overwhelming with the amount of work that you guys are getting, um, and I don't know what the resolution to it is, but I myself have called and left multiple messages, sent emails, and I can't get a response. You dealt with the same situation, too. So I don't know how we address this, I don't know exactly how your department operates on a day-to-day, um, but it is a concern, because the citizens are calling us complaining and asking why people aren't calling them back, what can we do, and I don't have answers to those, and I'll step in when I can, but, um, a lot of that obviously is over our heads and out of our hands, so.
We'll definitely look into that, for sure.
Okay.
I just have one, like, uh, can we get an update on the situation with the Bentwood property?
That, that's in my director's report.
Okay, yeah, because I've got, I, I, uh, had a hour-long phone call and a, at least 30-minute follow-up on that one, so.
Uh, okay, I'm going to close the public comment portion. Uh, director's report, I believe, is next.
So, um, basically, uh, what, the, the determination we made, that I think we told you last time, was that the presentations to you all in the council, um, never mentioned anything about changing a rear setback.
Right.
And so, um, our determination, it was that the intention of both the commission and the council was to adopt three changes, uh, none of those three involved the rear setback, and that the inclusion of a change to the rear setback was a topographical error, basically, or scrivener's error is what they're called legally. Um, so we are taking a resolution to the city council tomorrow for them to acknowledge there was a scrivener's error and to correct it.
Okay.
Basically, it's not really amending or changing anything, it's acknowledging that what their intention was, uh, was to adopt those three changes as presented that did not include any change to the rear setback. Um, we have also met with the applicant, uh, in the case with the building permits, where they submitted application for building permits, meeting that reduced setback. Um, I think I had mentioned stop work orders had been issued, and so we're in the process of resolving that. Uh, this one's a little more complicated because of the deed restrictions in Bentwood.
Yes.
It's, it's, uh, discussions between us and the applicant, but also between the applicant and Bentwood, uh, but those conversations are ongoing as well.
And my understanding was that there was, uh, stop work orders also sent to a property where there didn't need to be, there was no issue?
Yeah, there, there were six properties that got building permits, we inadvertently sent all six stop work order. Um, he, he called, I mean, within hours, and we reversed that and said, no, sorry, we, we just sent them out to all those addresses, um, and pulled it back, so he was, he was able to continue building on the one lot.
Okay. And then something about, there was some amendment, or, I, I don't know, a document that was sent that you guys filled out, and then sent back and said, wait, we need to fill out a blank one, but again, lots of sort of, like, runaround on stuff, again?
Y- yes. One of the, um, options that we presented to the applicant was, as with anyone, they have the ability to seek a variance. So, on those five properties where they had already proposed buildings that were closer to the rear property line than is allowed under the standard ordinance, uh, they have the ability to seek a variance for that. Um, we sent them a, a application, uh, we had filled in some of the details, um, for what they might need to ask.
Gotcha.
Uh, I think after review with our legal staff, we determined that they need to fill that, we, we shouldn't as staff be filling out applications for an applicant. Uh, so we, we basically said, here, here's a blank one, you need to fill it out yourself and sign it. Um, and so, I think that's all that was. We, we sort of shot ourselves in the foot by trying to be too helpful, which-
Yeah, and I appreciate that, I get that.
Um, are any or all of the lots in question going before the ZBA?
Yes, I believe they are scheduled for the next, they have actually applied for the variance and will be going at the October meeting.
Okay. And what is the staff's position on their, on that case?
I think we've, we're still in review, so we haven't made a formal determination of whether or not we would support it, uh, or be opposed, or just be neutral. Uh, there, I don't want to go into too much of the detail, there are some, uh, there are some factors, our understanding now from the applicant is, the neighbors behind those rear yards are now in support of allowing them to build closer. Um, again, there's some details to that, but, um, that, we don't know that, I've not heard that from the adjacent neighbors, uh, at this point, but that's what they claimed to us in the, uh-
Okay.
-in the meeting we had.
What we heard, Travis, was that the option was that they were able to chop off some of the concrete, move a little bit up, but they had to go two-story, and so if they went two-story on the three houses, the neighbor that's complaining about-
Would rather have a tighter setback.
Yeah, all of a sudden, they're putting in a, you know, some balcony or something up on top, and they'd be looking at the neighbor instead. So the neighbor preferred that, you know, let's give them the setback and back off.
Please don't build a two-story behind me, is what the neighbor said.
Yeah, I don't want a two-story behind me, looking directly into me, so that's what we were told, and, you know, I don't know what this is due to me as to what's the next step is, but I think that's what the neighbor, why the change of mind was, I don't need a balcony overlooking.
Yeah.
Actually, it was three of them.
Yes.
Okay.
And they did, those neighbors did get a notice-
Right.
-for the ZBA case, so we will likely hear from them, or if we don't, that's telling as well.
Okay.
That's all I had for directors.
Uh, okay. I think we're down to adjournment.
Yeah, I've got one quick question.
Nope.
I'm so sorry, because I'm that person today. Um, on short-term rentals, really quick, with the map that is on the COSA site, how often is that being updated to show STRs? Two of the, um, the issues that I've had over the last month and a half were that the house was hidden, which I don't fully understand what that means, if it didn't make it to the map, if it was overlooked in notes, but the two applicants for these STRs had done the legwork, thinking that everything was good, and then all of a sudden. So, again, that's why I was asking about the ZBA, because I feel like both of those are going to go in front of the ZBA.
Yeah, that, that issue was largely due to staff turnover and some of the cases that-
Right.
-other staff members that left-
Sure.
-um, didn't get those sent over to our mapping folks.
Okay.
I believe that's, that's fixed now, all of the old ones are correct.
Yeah, I'm looking at it, and it is correct now, I just didn't know, is it a 30-day turnaround? Like, what, what is the new goal, just so that way we know?
The, the goal now is, any that were approved today should show up on the map by the end of the week.
Okay.
Uh, well, should be sent to our GIS folks and put on the map. It sometimes takes, um, a few days.
But not eight months.
And we go into the, all the detailed process, but-
Right.
They show up on our maps internally, before they show up online, because there's a process through the software vendor, it takes two or three days before it's then updated on our online maps, because those are actually stored offsite-
Sure.
-through the, the vendor in California.
Okay. But under 30 days would be-
Yeah, and- Yes, absolutely, under 30 days.
Just, along those lines, uh, I know that, I had an exchange with Aaron about getting a list of short-term rentals. Uh, I think it'd be great for the city to set up a website that became a, a good resource for the community to learn about, uh, a, a live working list of the short-term rentals that have been approved, denied, that are in process, uh, a link to a map, you know, the GIS map that you guys were alluding to, uh, maybe a link to the state, uh, websites where they can register to pay sales tax or, or hotel occupancy tax, uh, you know, a, a listing of the requirements of the ordinance, uh, in order to, to obtain a conditional use permit.
And then link to that in the letter, because I think that a lot of the opposition that you get is just that, the letter that you send is fine, I mean, I get it, it's fine.
Yeah.
And I get that a lot of people won't read all the things, but there are a lot of people that I think would read, and especially if they're taking time to come here, you know, what we heard today is a lot of, like, oh, wow, I didn't know all these things, and, you know, that's, well, some of my concerns, and, and I know that won't catch everybody, but I, I do think there's not much information in what you send, so if there's a way to, to just link or can, you know, say, go here for more information about renewals and things.
It would, I think it would reduce the amount of work on y'all's end-
Yeah.
-to have a website that had this information.
And we're actually in the process of reviewing the website right now, and it's one of the things we're looking at.
Okay.
No, that's perfect.
All right.
I also think it'll help with citizens that are in that neighborhood, oh, there's a short-term rental here, who's the local operator?
Yes, yeah.
Or probably had to contact somebody.
That'd be awesome.
I think that'd be very helpful.
Yeah.
Um, okay, I think that's all we've got.
Give a motion to adjourn.
All right, we have a motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. It's 4:01 o'clock.
Thank you, staff.